To being a quorum president, I call this meeting to the Margate Planning Board to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
That flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets.
First case, Steven and Heidi Gold-- oh, excuse me.
Before we start tonight, there's been a change in the order of cases. Item number eight and item number nine will be reversed. The first case is Steven and Heidi Goldberg, 114 South Rumsen Avenue, Block 19, Lot 17, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance for pool setback, dormer roof pitch, and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is vacant land recently torn down with 82 feet of frontage and a depth of 80 feet for a total of 6,620 square feet. A two-and-a-half-story, five-bedroom house is designed for the property per the submitted plans by Asher Associates Architects. The design is replete with amenities, including extensive beachfront patio and beachfront decks at second and third floor levels. This appears to be a buy-right design with two exceptions: a small roof pitch matter and a pool setback. Note that the property is actually, on the date of this writing, only 75 feet wide. The additional seven feet toward and including the bulkhead is under negotiation with the city as to an arrangement wherein the land may be transferred to the Goldbergs for consideration in favor of the city's regarding bulkhead reconstruction. Approval by the planning board must be conditioned on completion of that arrangement and presentation to the board administrator of a filed deed. Variance is required in comments. Roof pitch: Minimum angle on upper-floor roofs is 5-on-12. This applies to two small dormer roofs, front and rear, of minimal extent which are nestled within the much steeper 11-on-12 roof lines predominant in this house. These would be invisible from the street level and do not create any excess third-level floor space. The board should consider overall aesthetics of the house and whether or not via site inspection and review of the plans it creates a boxiness or is simply a minor note within a very attractive roof arrangement. And the other variance is pool setback, 10 feet required to side and rear property lines versus 5 to 6 feet to the new property line, which would be the outside of the bulkhead. The pool is almost 32 feet to the rear neighbor and 29 feet to the front property line. There should therefore be no impact as to noise or privacy. The board has to consider safety aspects, and the applicant offers that the new bulkhead to be constructed would be 6 feet above the beach grade outside of it. This should be clearly evidenced by the applicant as to the relative grades and bulkhead height. No conditions are proposed at this time other than the aforementioned requirement for an executed and recorded deed for the full 82-foot-wide property.
Excuse me. Roger, I have a question clarified. Is-- are you saying without the extra 7 feet, this would not fit on the lot?
I think actually the pool would be partly on the 7 feet.
It's not actually-- it's between 4 and 5 feet. It's not 7 feet.
Okay. Whatever it is, it's a purchase of land from the city to the bulkhead.
But they-- my question is, they have to have this land to do what they're intending to do?
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we have the city solicitor who's aware of this. John? Yeah? We-- good evening, everybody. Chris Valenson, on behalf of Steven Goldberg, is here with us this evening with respect to his property at 114 South Rumsen Avenue. It's identified in the tax map as Lot 17 in Block 19. It's in the S-40 zoning district. And to address Mr. Patterson, your initial inquiry, there is an agreement in place with the city for acquisition of some sand area that is upland of the bulkhead but forward of the property line, an application similar to Essex and the Beach, which we dealt with about six months ago. Mark, can I have a plan out, please? The agreement with the city was and is, at this juncture, quite advantageous to the city, especially in light of the storm that recently took place, for acquisition of what is between, like, 3 feet 8 inches and 5 feet upland of the bulkhead.
75 feet.
Here. This area. And return. And return for that, relatively small structure, as I said, around 400 feet average. The bulkhead is in front of the Goldberg's, out in this place. Return, which runs all the way up Rumsen Avenue, almost a full lot depth, is being replaced, as is the street end, at Mr. Goldberg's costing expense. With that having been said, the proposal this evening is for a new single-family home as designed by Mark Asher. Everybody's seen it on their plans. There are very nice color elevations included within your planned set. It is a buy-right application with respect to the bulk criteria, meaning this house meets or is well within all the setback requirements, the height requirement, the coverage requirement, the landscaping requirement. The only two variances are minor deviations from the ordinance that are sought or with respect to the roof pitch on two doors. And for a pool setback, which application this board has heard before in other matters, 5 feet from the bulkhead versus 10 feet required, otherwise the pool meets or exceeds-- actually substantially exceeds all the setback requirements. With that having been said, Mark, will you testify first, please? John, will you be sworn at the same-- Mark, you're a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And you have a spear before the--
Yes.
And you designed the Goldberg house that the board is considering this evening?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough and bring the boards forward because it's a very-- And the dormer that we're here to speak of?
Well-- As Mr. Valenson noted, a beachfront property, a single-family home, two-and-a-half-story. And, you know, I think the pictures obviously tell much of the story of what we're doing and why we're here tonight. So, the Goldberg's have been terrific clients for us and wanted a, you know, as good as we've gotten, and so here I think it is. The dormer question that we're here for, it's really hard-pressed to show it on this, on the elevations because hidden so much, and I think Mr. Rubin's mentions that as well. Certainly, the purpose of that code, to jump ahead, is, you know, to reduce and minimize the boxy bulkiness of a roof design, and, you know, so that's clearly what's at work here with-- this is the front, the beachfront view, these very low-sloped, bringing a two-- a three-story house, really, or two-and-a-half, all the way down to a one-story, very cottagy-looking building. So, you know, again, I think the pictures speak for themselves, you know, that, you know, here on the beachfront, I think you'll be able to see just a little bit of the raised roof, really, to make that master bedroom work. But again, it's really all hidden from public view. So, you know, the building sort of as a mask, appearing to be, you know, fairly small and cottagy on the street front, on the public view, as you approach the house, but then on the side that really cannot be seen is really where we're popping up that roof, just a little bit, so.
Mark, did you require more for all roof--
Yes.
The compensation, so to speak, and I think-- 312, is that where we're at approximately?
Yes, yes.
In compensation for that--
Well--
And how they exceed--
Well, I think what Mr. Valenson might be getting at is if we average things, you know, here we have, you know, very steep roof pitches, well above or above 12, 12, above 12, 12. So perhaps that, if I understand correctly, that's part of your question. If we average everything, we're going to be well under--
Well, in excess of--
Yeah, or well over a 512 pitch.
Where are they on the pictures? Would you--
Yeah, it's pretty special, yes.
Thank you very much, Mark. John, very quickly, please, let's get back to the pool. As opposed to 10 feet, could you address that variance and identify for the pool peers, the other setbacks, and why you believe that variance?
I'm speaking for Mr. Asher's Plan V-1 at the moment, and the pool itself is located, obviously, on the oceanfront and is basically centered, nearly centered on the lot between Rumsen Avenue and the back property line of Rumsen Avenue, adjacent to the oceanward bulkhead. The pool is proposed to be set approximately 30 feet from either Rumsen Avenue or the rear property line. So, it is a great distance from the adjacent, from the neighbor next to us. It is a great distance from Rumsen Avenue. The deviation or the request this evening is with respect to the setback to the bulkhead. As you know, the ordinance requirement is 10 feet. At this, our proposal is 5 feet. This location of the pool at that setback has been approved by the NJDEP. And when setbacks to pools, as you know, we've done a lot of them, the two main issues are, are you creating a nuisance to your neighbors, number one, and number two, are you creating a safety hazard? Obviously, the nuisance to the neighbor discussion really is not in play here because we are so far from our prop, our, the street or our side, well, I'm sorry, rear property line, and then we're to the open beach, obviously, on the ocean side. So really, it's a matter of safety is the only potential concern here. And the way that Mr. Asher has designed this, and I'm going to use elevations to explain it to you, the floor of the home will be at elevation 12 to meet the FEMA requirements. The pool itself will be at elevation 10. The bulkhead that separates the pool from the beach will be at elevation 13, so it'll appear to be approximately a 3-foot wall from the pool deck. But most importantly, the top of that bulkhead to the adjacent sand is approximately 6 feet or so from that beach sand up to the top of bulkhead. So, you'll have an effective safety wall or safety rail, whatever you want to consider it, being the bulkhead so that it will be difficult for somebody to jump from the beach up over onto the deck and into the pool, thereby creating a safe condition. Obviously, the balance, the home and then walls and fences will surround the balance of the pool to meet the requirements for the pool structure.
John, and you're familiar with this location of the beach in the--
Yes.
And when I say that is, this is not a necessarily very active area--
Correct. It's kind of setback. Other than crossing, entering the beach from the street end, it's not an area where sunbathers or beachgoers would hang out, so to speak.
Do you therefore think that that variance can be granted without any impact to the ordinance?
I do. I think that the public safety is protected with this design by the way that Mr. Asher has designed the elevations to work with the adjacent land.
And overall, do you believe that those purposes of the municipal endowment-- bulkhead are going to comply with all of the new FEMA requirements--
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Mr. Asher has done a tremendous job with the home, as he always does. You know, the variance that he explained to you, obviously, is clearly mitigated by the aesthetic improvement of this property, and the purposes of zoning are advanced in the protection from flood with the new structure being--
Do you therefore think variances can be granted without substantial damage to the public good?
Yes, I do, for all the reasons I've stated.
Thanks, John. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for this particular application.
John? I'm very familiar with that beach. Sometimes that sand is up almost to the top of the bulkhead, and sometimes the sand is 10 feet below the bulkhead with storms and with the beach changing and everything. It's, it may be set back, but that level goes up and down depending on the time of year and the--
Yeah, the sand--
Well, I know that location, it does, so.
When we did our survey, it was at approximately elevation between 7 and 7.3--
Right.
Which does give you that 6-foot reward.
Right.
There is the possibility that sand does, you know, sand does drift and build up against the bulkhead. Now, I guess as a case of maintenance, that the--
I just wanted to--
--need to make sure that that, it doesn't, that sand doesn't care for some of the things we operate on.
Yeah, all right.
Any questions from the board? Brenda?
So, we'll make a motion, I guess, conditioned upon the 7 feet being acquired by the Goldbergs. Is that what we're proposing? Okay.
Brenda, why you bring that up? Chris, I think it's 7 feet. I think you said it's not 7 feet, it's 5 feet or 4 feet.
It runs on an angle--
I know, but at the, at the, at the street, the survey shows a 75-foot lot, and the site plan of Asher shows an 82-foot lot. So it's 7 feet at the narrowest.
I don't believe, I don't believe it is. I mean, we've double-checked it. I've worked back and forth with Mr. Abbott on that, and I'll make sure it's accurate and that the zoning information is accurate. I didn't perceive it to be that as wide as 7 feet, but we will double-check that and make sure it's accurate on the plan.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's not what you were talking about, Brenda, was it?
Brenda, do you--
You were talking about the level of the beach?
No, I don't. I don't remember the feet, but I remember we talked about it, and for whatever it's worth, I would support, considering my vote would be in favor of allowing Mr. Mrs. Goldberg to have his property to, in return, to retire.
Roger Barnhart tells me you are correct and I am wrong.
All right, so it is, we can say, safely say it is 7 feet--
Yes.
At the, at the street.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I just have one question of Chris. After Rich mentioned about the sand buildup, I think I remember in the last case we did like that, that the bulkhead had a glass, 2 feet or something fence across the top. I mean-- Just something to protect the--
The answer is yes. We would do what we did on that side. We put clear glass, railing above the bulkhead, just for that extra safety moment.
It wouldn't obstruct the view, but it would give the safety, is that--
I mean, this overhang, then yes, we have to--
Chris, I have one question. The garage overhang, it's a 1-foot overhang and the garage setback is a foot. So can we make sure the overhang doesn't--
No encroachment?
No encroachment onto the neighbor, because if they put a gutter on, then it would encroach into the neighbor's yard.
Absolutely make sure there's no encroachment to the neighbor's property, and I--
Thank you.
--should mention--
All right, I'm going to make a motion in the affirmative for the board's consideration. The applicant is requesting C variances. One is for roof pitch, but the proposed is 11/12. The required is 5/12. And for pool setback, I have, Mr. Valenson, I have 5 or 6 feet for the setback. What was actually, I didn't, for the record, 5 feet. 5 foot is proposed and it's required 10. I believe there's going to be conditions. The approval's contingent upon the applicant acquiring a strip adjacent to the bulkhead, which is 7 feet at the street, and it's running adjacent to the property along the beach, and a condition of that there is a 2-foot fence, clear fencing on the bulkhead.
That would be required revised plans. And the other condition, did you mention the condition about the transfer of the land?
Yes.
That, we would have to have that completed and deeded before the planning department would sign the plan, would execute the plan.
You want my help?
How can we execute plans if you don't own land?
Well, we could have equitable interest in land by way of an agreement with the city.
Okay.
The land needs to be with the city. The city, I mean--
No--
Irregularly, sorry.
No building permit until--
So no demolition permit, Roger?
Until--
Well, we could do, we could do a foundation permit, because a foundation permit wouldn't encroach--
Nothing beyond a foundation, but that's fine.
Can't keep up with him. That'll be enough time then.
Just to you.
The answer's down there. That's fine, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we approve it, over.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. As usual, Mr. Asher did a magnificent job on this plan. This is a type of a home you expect to see in Margate, you expect to see on the beach. If we weren't really privy to the inside information, looking at the plan, you wouldn't even see the variances on the roof. And everyone knows that I've been a proponent of getting the pool setbacks at 5 feet anyway, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlaski?
I think the low-slope dormers are visually of no real consequence, and I don't think the pool being 5 foot rather than 10 foot off the property line makes it any more or less a hazard, so I vote yes.
Mike Richman?
I vote this also. I think the pool with pitch--
I think the dormer pitch is de minimis, and I don't see any problem with the 5-yard setback for the pool.
Ed Galantino?
Thank you for the elevation 12, Mr. Asher. That's a beautiful thing for our flood construction. The dormers and the roof pitch is not going to affect that at all. I think it's a beautiful house. Thank you. I approve.
I vote yes. The roof line is stunning and is way less intrusive to me than otherwise the roof line would be. And I think the pool with the beach as a backdrop, there's no concern of privacy or
I approve the application based upon the same reasons Mr. Wazlaski and Mr. Richman. They're de minimis and there's no negative impact on either to any of the neighbors, and it's a beautiful home for the neighborhood.
I think it's a beautiful addition to the street in Margate, and I'm in favor of it. And I'm glad you put the 2-foot of glass on top of the bulkhead also.
Agree with the things that Tom Collins outlined.
I think granting the variance for the roof line is well within keeping within the intent of the master plan, and the, I commend the applicant for agreeing to put the 2-foot, For the record, Commissioner Toby has recused herself. Next case is Thomas and Janet Dugan, 362 North Rumsen Avenue, Block 619, Lot 5, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance for lot width, lot area, side setback, building height, third-floor deck, and possible landscape area, and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is a two-story, single-family house on a canal-front lot of 32 feet wide by 100 feet in depth, of which 69 feet is inside the bulkhead line. The existing house, which is to be demolished if this application is approved, has side setbacks of 2.8 feet on the right side and 4 feet on the left. It has total coverage of 683 square feet, which is stated to be 32 percent building coverage. The proposal herein, per the Ponzio site plan and the John Noble and its architectural plans submitted herewith, is to demolish and replace with a two-and-a-half-story house having four bedrooms and third-floor den with deck over the canal. The proposed house would have side setbacks at 5 feet on the right side and 4 feet on the left, and a total footprint of 978 square feet or 44 percent. Information about the height of the existing house is not available, but the proposed house would be 29 and 1/2 feet above present first-floor elevation requirement for a variance of 1 and 1/2 feet in total building height. Variance is required on building height, 28 feet above required first floor is permitted. Required first floor per ordinance 2013-17 is 11 feet, and this house is proposed to be 29 and 1/2 feet above that point, creating a variance of 1 and 1/2 feet. That is because the actual proposed first floor is at elevation 13 and 1/2, and the house is 27 feet above that point. So the first floor starts 2 and 1/2 feet higher than required, but the overall height is 1 foot less than allowed, hence a variance of 1 and 1/2 feet. Second-- Second, minimum lot frontage, 40 feet is required. This is a 32-foot-wide lot existing, but a variance when a house is demolished. Third, minimum lot area, 2,750 uplands is required. The lot is 2,221 with the new bulkhead. Same comment above as to demolition. Four side setbacks on the left, five is required, four as designed. Side setback combined, 11.84 feet is required, nine as proposed. Distance between principal buildings, 10 feet is required. It is 6.67 feet between the left wall of the proposed house and the house to the left. Landscape area, 35% is required total. It is 32% regarding the existing house, and that is reduced to 23% in the proposed house. And finally, front landscape area, 60% is required versus 47% as designed. Comments? The height variance appears to be related to the desire for parking under the building. A virtuous endeavor in a neighborhood where parking can be premium at times, especially in the dangerous corner location. The board via its site visits should consider the total building mass as it relates to the streetscape and nearest homes. Also worthy of consideration is the third floor, which, if eliminated, would eliminate the height variance while retaining the under-the-building parking. It is the applicant's burden in undersized lot cases to convince the board that the proposed house is appropriate within the neighborhood, within the neighborhood context in terms of height, mass, setbacks, et cetera. Side setbacks and distance between buildings' variances are related to matters such as view to the canal and impacts, if any, on houses to the right and left, such as obstruction of light and air, view blockage, privacy, and noise if observed by your site visits. If arguments are made that the existing, to-be-demolished house is somewhat less virtuous than the replacement, such as having closer setbacks than the proposed, the board must also consider that the new house is also possibly higher, somewhat more massive, probably has higher side walls, and covers considerably more ground, and permits for less landscape area. If approved, a condition should be satisfaction of all non-wavable city engineer site review requirements and eight sets of revised plans showing the required changes. Also, if approved, the zoning schedules should be corrected to reflect all variances and remove non-variances, and this has been actually done in the final version of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Members of the board, my name is Chris Ballson, and I represent Tom and Janet Dugan, who are here with us this evening. They own the property. It's 362 North Rumpson Avenue, identified in the tax map as lot 5 in block 619. It's an undersized lot, 32 feet wide in the S-40 zone. As I said, 32 feet wide, it's 100 feet deep, 69 feet of that is upland. The house, pretty much, right now is developed at grade in a location that is extremely low in the floods, in the street there, at a full-moon, high tide, let alone a northeaster or a storm like we had. That reason, and we'll get into that more, for that reason, the Dugans proposed to take this house, half-story house, on the property, and as part of that development, they are required to raise their slab a foot and a half, and then take advantage of the 28 feet in height that taken into consideration. What that does is pushes the house up 1.5 feet above where it is permitted to be. We are not, please understand, we are not doing this to get, not doing this to get more livable space. When I say that, what's going to happen is that off-grade slab will come up. Off-street parking to get the two cars off the street, right now there is none. We get two cars off the street, we get a car on an elevated driveway and a car on an elevated garage. When I say, what we hear typically with respect to a height variance, that's really- All third floors, because you started five-foot knee-walls and go up only to about 7 and 1/2 feet. So I don't want this board to be under the impression that the Dugans are doing this because they want this big, massive house in this little lot. The driving force behind this, and you will hear this better from both John and John, is to get, to get the house out of the water, you know, at this location. I know this board has considered height variances- At other properties on this side of the street on the lagoon. House will not be uncharacteristic or out of place with respect to other houses on that side of the street. I have John Noble Ennis and John Barnhart and Tom Dugan- The architectural plans submitted to the board.
Yes, I do.
Do you have them with you?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to grab them? If you would be kind enough, tell us what it is when Tom and Janet Dugan came to you, and use the microphone, John. Tom and Janet Dugan came to you and you saw the property, explain to us what it was they asked you to do, the reasons for it, and what solution that you guys came up with.
Well, the first thing we talked about when we met was the water condition. You know, the house was-
Talk to them, let's talk to them.
Yeah, because I'm answering your questions. It was a water problem, obviously, you know, and this was before Hurricane Sandy. And, you know, we would meet at the house, and it smelled musty, there was water everywhere, and their reason was to eliminate that big water issue by working with a new house. The existing house was starting to deteriorate, it was low on the ground, for all those reasons that they wanted to have a new house. So we got together and we talked about working with the existing site, coming close to what the house was originally. And this is pretty much, I don't want to say a typical Margate house, but a typical waterfront property, where you have the first floor, open plan, views to the water, second floor bedrooms, master bedroom with a deck, and a third floor with a playroom and a bedroom. And it's typical, and I can say modest, because Chris brought out that we have eight-foot ceilings on the first floor, eight-foot on the second floor, and then whatever you can carve out in the third floor with a maximum of about seven feet. And one point was on the garage on the first floor, there is room for a car, there's room for a car on the driveway, but they're not going to staff it with bicycles and surfboards because you have a lot of space on the side of the garage for that purpose, you know, so you have extra storage on that ground floor because of the height and room for a car off the property, actually two cars.
John, right now, there is no off-street parking at the house whatsoever.
Correct.
And we are adding two spaces-
Yes, we are.
And those two spaces comply with Jordan's requirement.
They do.
And actually, how does this house-
Well, again, it's-
Help the board, just very quickly, through the floor plan to-
Okay. Again, first floor, which is above the grade level, first floor has living area, dining, and kitchen, all in one space. We had to locate the stair to one side again because of the narrowness of the property. Usually I put it in the middle of the place, but we're really constricted to where we locate the stairs, which then sets up the dimensions for the rooms. They're not oversized. We located all the utilities to one side, stairs, powder room, elevator, and kitchen. And then where the views are, that's opened up as a floor plan on the first floor. Access to the deck on the waterfront, and then access from the street up the middle here. Again, coming up the stairs to the second floor, same thing, it's loaded up with utilities, bathrooms, on the narrow side of the project with a minimum windows, and then it all opens up to the bedrooms on the side that faces the water, at least a corner view toward the waterfront. Same thing with the third floor, up the stairs to the level, open playroom, a very, again, I say modest, I don't want to overuse the word modest, but a small deck off of the third floor tucked in pretty far from both edges, again, with views to the waterfront.
Yeah, we touched a little bit upon the ceiling heights, and again, confirm, the garage has a seven-foot ceiling height, first floor is eight foot, is that right?
Yes.
Second floor is eight foot, correct?
Correct.
And the third floor max will be seven feet, approximately?
Yeah, again, Margate rules, we start at five feet on the perimeter, and we build up to the middle of about seven, seven feet.
Understanding that the Dugans were sensitive to the neighbors, this house has a permitted-
Yes.
And please explain to the board how you design that to be sensitive to-
Again, on the third-floor deck, it's centered on a structure on the top, and then it's about eight or nine feet off of the edges. And again, this roof deck, it doesn't protrude up above it, it's hidden within the slope of the roof on either side, actually three sides. There are two sides in the front, it's kind of tucked in. If you look at the elevation on the side views, you barely see the top of the handrail, and then it offers some privacy. And again, that's setback about nine feet off of each side, so that if you're on a deck, you have privacy from your neighbors, and in turn, your neighbors have privacy from you, as much as we could work it.
Thanks, very much, John.
John, is there a little third-floor deck in the front of the house there, that little square thing?
What's on the front is a, what I call a Romeo and Juliet balcony. You can't put chairs out there. It's basically, you open up the door and you-
You can stand out there?
Check the weather report. No, it's really just like a flower box. It's maybe a foot in, foot out from the, it's 16 inches out from the wall, and it's basically, open up the door, you kind of lean out, looking up and down the street. You can't put a chair out there to sit, you could put your foot out there if you wanted to, but there's no place to sit or set up a table of chairs. It's a really small, and again, I call it Romeo and Juliet balcony.
John, hearing licensed professionals here in Planner, in the state-
That's correct.
You prepared a site plan that you're going to speak from this evening?
Yes.
And did all the permit-
Correct.
Your office did?
Yes.
Would you be kind enough then, John, to explain-
Certainly, just give me one second here.
I have not labeled anything. We will start with your exhibit.
Okay, I'm going to start with Exhibit A1, which is an aerial photograph of the property in question and some of the surrounding properties. The property in question, the Dugan, the existing, current Dugan residence, is a 69, roughly a 69-foot-deep lot measured to the bulkhead, which is 32 feet wide. So it's a small lot, especially on the lagoon. It is a property that has a number of challenges with regard to its exceptional narrowness, and it also has a number of challenges with respect to its specific location within the community. And you'll understand why I started with that, because we believe it's what justifies some of the relief that we're asking for this evening. But looking at this exhibit for a second, the property in question is that white house that I'm pointing to. It's a property the Dugan family has owned, I think, in excess of 40 years at this point, since the late 60s. Mr. Dugan has lived there since he was a kid and is intending, should he reach an approval this evening, to tear this house down, construct a new house to become his retirement home. This picture, you can see the surrounding developments. We have a litany of properties along Rumpson Avenue that are absolutely gorgeous homes, very large-scale homes, very typical type of homes on the lagoon lots. They are all beautiful, they are all very large in size, they all have a lot of bulk and mass to them. Our application, as I mentioned, is to tear down the home that we have there now, which is very, very low, and to develop a new, single-family house on the property. So I'm going to jump over to Exhibit A2, what I'll call Exhibit A2. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application. And you can see the home on the lot, which is basically centered on the property. The home is, as Mr. Noble Ennis described, is a 23-foot-wide home. It is approximately 2,400 square feet in total living space. And it is intended to be developed with all of the typical type of site improvements that you see on a lagoon front lot, the rear yard, the entire rear yard being a deck, front yard, or front access to the home, and then a one-car exterior parking space, and then a garage space as you head into the property. The property, the total lot area is 2,221 square feet, which will be the resultant area of the lot once a new bulkhead is constructed.
John, that's the upland?
Yes, that's the upland area of the lot. The bulkhead, the dock configuration, the decking, and the home have all been approved in the configuration that was submitted by the NJDEP in all aspects. The reason that we are here before you this evening is because there are a number of variances that are necessary in order to accomplish the proposal. First, I-
Let's do the height last.
Yeah, I was going to.
Start with the setbacks, then we'll go to landscaping and-
Certainly. I was going to, I'm going to start with what I call existing non-conformities. While we have, we have an existing lot of record, there is an existing, single-family home on it, because we're tearing that house down and starting from scratch, there are technically variances because we have a point in time where we have a vacant lot. But what we have is an existing lot of record that's 32 feet wide. As everyone is aware, the minimum lot width requirement at this location is 50 feet, and therein lies the variance. You can see from our survey, from the site plan, and from the aerial photo, properties on both sides have been developed, they've been developed for many, many years. The ability of additional land is obviously not available at this point. So what we're dealing with with regard to the lot width specifically is what we would consider a classic C1 or hardship type of variance, in that we have an existing lot that is undersized, because of, and due to its being existing, we believe that that variance can be granted. The second, again, what I call existing non-conformity deals with the total lot area. The lot area is required at this location to be 2,750 square feet. As a result of the bulkhead, new bulkhead location, the lot will be 2,221 square feet, so it is approximately 530 square feet short of the requirement. Again, this is a condition that has existed since the day that the Dugans bought it, over 40 years ago, with no ability to modify that. But because we are proposing to construct a new dwelling, a variance would be required for that. The next set of variances that are being requested deal with setback. The home itself, as I mentioned, is proposed to be 23 feet wide. With a 32-foot-wide lot, you have, we're proposing a five-foot side yard on one side, which meets the minimum requirement for side yard, and a four-foot side yard on the other side, which is one foot short of the minimum requirement. Coupled with those setbacks, the application does not meet the minimum distance between the adjacent building, where, as you know, 10 feet is required, and it does not meet the combined setback requirement of the requirement, I'm sorry, for one second, just let me get through my notes here. The requirement is 12, oh, I'm sorry, is- Just lost it, wait a second. The combined side yard required-
11.84 versus 9?
Yeah, there it is, 11.84, where we have nine as proposed, so-
Can I ask you a question?
Yep, absolutely.
Why did you move the house closer to the house that you're too close to? You moved it a foot over towards the house.
Well, we actually discussed that with Mr. Dugan at length, and the reason for it is because of the way the- it is because of the way the two adjacent developments layout. The existing house to the left has essentially a one-story garage, is kind of a dead space on that side, and they only have about a three-foot side yard. And Mr. Dugan, his intention is, obviously, his car, as well as his storage of materials, coming in and out of the garage door, this is going to be his main corridor access to his rear deck for his boating stuff and what have you, so that's why he chose to do that, because there's a nicer openness on that side.
And being familiar with that neighbor on that side...
Okay, so, the side yard setback variances that are necessary here, as I said, minimum one side where four feet is proposed and five feet is required, minimum combined where 11.8 feet is required and nine feet is proposed, and then the setback between buildings. So, why are these variances justified in an application like this? Well, we believe that this is, again, a case of a hardship scenario. We have a 32-foot-wide lot, we have minimum setbacks that are required as a result of that 32-foot-wide lot. If you apply the standards of five, and then essentially seven on the other side, you're down to a house that's only about 20 feet wide. As you heard Mr. Obelenis describe, even at 23 feet, creating corridors and utilities and rooms that are adequate for a lagoon-type property like this, was difficult to accomplish in 23 feet. So, meeting the strict definition of the ordinance makes it a very, very difficult house to occupy, and something that just becomes unfeasible and not worth constructing in the opinion of Mr. Obelenis and our client. So, for that reason, we believe that a hardship scenario is applicable to this project, because of what we would consider the unique narrowness of a lot that's in a 50-foot zone, and has setbacks that are based on that 50-foot zoning. And I think that that goes to the justification of both the minimum one side, the combined, as well as the distance between buildings. One of the topics I was going to discuss, which Mr. Patterson also already asked, is how do we decide what to accomplish, or where to accomplish which of the setbacks? And the nice thing about the existing setup of the two adjacent properties is that their garage is at kind of a one-story level, and you can see that in this A1. The garages, you can see the one-story garage on that side, that's kind of a dead space to that home, and again, the same thing on the other side. So, while we are a little bit tighter than we would like to be, we think that it's in a location that really does not create a negative impact on those two property owners because of how those lots are developed. So, for those reasons, we believe that the side yard setbacks are justified. The second group of variances deal with landscaping. We are requesting both a total lot landscape and a front yard landscape variance. The total lot landscaping is required, as you know, is 35 percent, we're proposing 23 percent. If you look at the lot, you can see that the reason for the variance is as a result of having a deck in your rear yard. Nearly every one of the properties along the lagoon, as everybody's familiar, is essentially entirely a deck from property line to property line, from the rear of the home out to the bulkhead, and in many cases, over the bulkhead. As you look at this property from the street, it will have landscaped side yards, it will have a landscaped front yard, it'll appear to essentially meet the requirements, but for the decking in the rear yard, which can't be considered landscape element, obviously, so that is why the deviation down to 23 percent exists on this site. So, the appearance is there, that we are only a single-car wide driveway, we are not adding long paved walkways along the sides or anything, we're keeping the impervious coverage to a minimum, and we are also going to design the downspout system so that it drains toward Rumsen Avenue and toward the bulkhead, because of the tight side yards, to make sure that we don't have, create a negative impact on either of the neighbors.
John, the bulkhead, what is the height going to be after it's replaced?
Well, as of the current ordinance, or, it's going to be whatever the ordinance is at the time that we go to construct it, I guess, but where we've currently proposed it, is that the deck would be at, these are in 88 datum numbers, that the deck would be at 7.7.
7.7.
Yeah, and then the bulkhead would be at the minimum below that.
I think the ordinance says 7.7, 7.5.
Well, the ordinance says 7.5 minimum in 29 datum.
Right.
Right, which would actually be 6.2 in 88 datum. So, this bulkhead is proposed to be 6.2 in 88 datum, with the deck at 7.7.
But your shots show 7.7, 88 datum.
For the deck?
Correct.
The bulkhead would be below that, because the deck goes across the top of it.
Roger, does the board need to be on board with this? If the deck is 7.7, why can't the bulkhead be 7.5, 88 datum, instead of going to 29?
What would it require?
Requires 7.7, 7 foot 5, 29.
Which is 6.2 in 88.
Which is low, very low.
Except the maximum requirement?
It's a minimum.
And you suggested that the board require...
That they go higher than minimum.
Can I just make one comment to that? This isn't exist, Mr. Dugan has a deck that exists that goes across the backyard and out over the water. The way that your ordinance reads, you're permitted a maximum height of a bulkhead of...
Nine.
Nine, right now, which is, again, going back to the datum, I know this jump back and forth is always a pain, but that maximum bulkhead height of nine equates to a deck that can't get across the top of the bulkhead, to be a consistent deck, which is how Mr. Dugan's property has been for many years, and how he intends to maintain it. So, in order to accomplish the deck, which is what many people have done, he's utilizing the minimum elevation that the ordinance currently allows for. My understanding that some of the suggested changes or potential changes coming forward, is that that bulkhead elevation requirement is actually going to change, it's going to come up, and then, as I understand it, likewise, the minimum elevation of the deck is also going to come up commensurate with the bulkhead elevation. If that happens, Mr. Dugan would have to conform to that, but to require him to meet the maximum elevation of the bulkhead now keeps him from being able to have a continuous rear yard deck, which the property has enjoyed for 40 years. So, that is a major concern to this application. I know, that's probably confusing to some people, it's confusing to try to explain, but...
Roger, couldn't, if we made him go to the new minimum of the bulkhead, couldn't we also say that the deck could be at that level, so it's still continuous?
Correct. Do you want to take him to the maximum?
To the maximum, I'm saying, and put the deck, so if we move that bulkhead up on him now, to make it more conforming to our code, we can also say that the deck can go with it right now?
You can, if you want, yeah, absolutely.
Wouldn't that be better than having a low bulk?
Yeah, as long as we have, whatever elevation that you want to require the bulkhead to be, as long as we have enough height in framing to take that deck across the top of that bulkhead, I don't, I don't think Mr. Dugan, I mean, frankly, the higher Mr. Dugan's allowed to build this, the less stairs he has to have in his rear, off of his front back porch. So, it's just that the way that your ordinance currently reads, if I raise that bulkhead, I now bifurcate my deck into this piece and this piece with stairs, and it's very cumbersome.
But John, if we go to the maximum, as Jamie is saying, do we have the room?
If we go to the maximum elevation, which I'm going to, we're going to talk about 88 datum, because that's what everything is written in now, the maximum elevation that the ordinance currently permits is 7.7 to the top of bulkhead. What that would require, is that would require this deck to go up approximately a foot, so the deck would have to go to 8.7.
I just want to make sure this board does what it's allowed to do. The bulkhead ordinance is not part of Chapter 175 land use. I don't know that, Mr. solicitor, that this board could give a variance of an ordinance that they're not, they have no jurisdiction over.
Well, it is not, it is not a development, or, even, but, with respect to deck elevation, the board does have that.
Yes, yes.
And if the construction official would like the bulkhead to be at 7.7, we will agree to do that, so long as this board grants the relief to allow the deck to be at that elevation to that.
Okay.
And that's actually, that's your step back, and when we do that.
That's why I brought it up, because I knew the deck and the bulkhead had matched.
You're voluntarily agreeing to do that?
There is no maximum bulkhead requirement in the bulkhead ordinance?
None.
Okay, all right.
It's just, the intent is to raise, to raise the bulkhead minimum, right?
It's the bulkhead, but I know we're going to run into decks, problem.
But the intent is to raise all the bulkheads on the bay at some point, so if we have new construction, it pays to do it now.
All bulkheads, bay and ocean.
Because if he didn't do it now, and they raised the minimum, he wouldn't have to raise it, he'd be grandfathered.
Right.
So, it's better, right, so it would be better to have him do it now, that's your point, okay.
I mean, well, if you consent to it, we don't have, you know, we can just make it as part of the variance. John, we...
Well, I didn't touch on the front yard landscape yet. So, front yard landscape, as you can see from the plan, we are required to have 60 percent of front yard landscape, we are at 47 percent as proposed, it's a result of the slab construction for the driveway and the number of stairs that are necessary, because this is such a low elevation location, there's a great number of stairs to get up to the floor height, those two elements diminish the front yard landscape availability, so we are approximately 12 percent short. We did look at the idea of creating a landscape strip in the driveway, however, this is a location where even landscaping is difficult to maintain because of the number of times that this corner floods from both fresh and salt water, and I'm going to talk about that in a little more detail as we get into the height. But we believe that there's a specific location of this, coupled with the fact that we are providing off-street parking where none currently exists, easily helps to mitigate that 12 percent reduction in front yard landscape.
John, while we're on setbacks in that area, just the prospective views being maintained, the rear yard, the principal building, in fact, does exceed the rear yard setback requirement?
It does, and this is going to be part of my discussion with height, but we'll get into the specifics. You heard about all the things that this project doesn't meet, but I want to talk quickly about the things that it does meet, because I think they're important to the justification or the overall balancing of this type of application. First and foremost, we are proposing to meet the front yard setback requirement. The average setback on this block is 12.1 feet, and it's really, it's 12 feet almost every house, so there's a great consistency on this block, we're proposing to meet that exactly with no variance. The rear of the home is allowed to be, as you know, 10 feet from the bulkhead, we're proposing the rear of the home to be actually 14, almost 14 and a half feet from the bulkhead, with a small rear upper-level deck that will also comply at 10 feet. So, we're meeting the front yard setback, we're meeting the rear yard setback. The building coverage at this location, as you're aware...
That second floor deck is uncovered.
That's correct. The building coverage at this location, as you're aware, on the lagoon properties, is permitted to be 50 percent. This building is proposed at 44 percent, so although we've asked for coverage variance, we've asked for setback variance, we're 6 percent below in building coverage than what this lot could otherwise support per your ordinance. That's important, because as Mr. Ruben's report discusses, the real key to this is it too much for the lot, and when you're 6 percent below in building coverage, I argue that you're not too much for the lot, because you actually have the legal right to build a larger footprint than what we are actually proposing.
And also, will the combined side yard setback actually increase if this, combined?
The combined side yard setback, you lost me there, Chris.
The combined side yard setback increases over what it was?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't understand what you're saying. Okay, so, let's go to the last thing, the last variance that we need to discuss this evening, and that is with regard to height. Height's obviously a hot topic in every town right now, given the issues related to Hurricane Sandy. And we've looked at this at great length for a great period of time with Mr. Dugan, and we've looked at this for a number of property owners, and how to appropriately accomplish everything that you're trying to accomplish on a property, and still meet the height requirements, but meet all the needs of the property with regard to flooding. This specific site location, at the corner, the intersecting 90-degree corner of Fulton and Rumsen Avenue, and I'm going to use elevation so that everybody kind of can picture in their head what, you know, how things compare to one another. This street is at approximate elevation 3 and 1/2. It's one of the lowest spots in the community. It floods on moon tides, it floods on every hurricane tide, or every hurricane, obviously, or major northeast storm. And what it also does, is it has a storm drainage system that's relatively small, and even on a hard rainstorm, and actually, we have Mr. Dugan's photos, which, okay, do you want to pass, do you want to start passing them now, so I can start looking at them? Even on a hard rainstorm, when we don't have a high tidal condition, the stormwater itself backs up in the street and floods the street. So, having dealt with this for 40 years with his father's cars, and his cars, and all of his family visits to the property, what he asks us to try to figure out is how can we develop parking on his site that meets enough of a free board to get the nuisance storm, so that his car is protected all the time, or at least most of the time, we'll say. Right now, Mr. Dugan has a property that he has no off-street parking. And we thought about, is the right thing to do, to try to create a building that maybe doesn't need the level of variances, and bring the building down a little bit, and not put parking on the site, and come for a parking variance? But what we have right now is we have a situation where, when the Dugans come to the property, and they happen to be here during a rain or a tidal situation, their car floods in the street, they can't get to their front door, you can see from the photos there, it's a real, this is a real-life flooding situation from both directions, from stormwater and also from tidal influence. So, what we did, is we've done some research in the past, and we did some more research for this property, is we looked at the tidal conditions to see what the appropriate elevation would be for coming up his garage and into his garage slab, so that his, anything that he's storing, as well as his car, could be in a much better situation, and be out of what I consider that nuisance flooding elevation. So, that he can, there's maybe one or two times a year, or every other year, where he may still see water in that garage, but what's going to get him out of harm's way 95 percent of the time, as opposed to being in harm's way nearly all the time right now? And what we established is that his garage slab needs to be approximately 1.5 feet above the existing adjacent grade. So, what we're proposing is that his garage slab is at elevation 5.5, okay? As you heard Mr. Obelenis describe, he's proposing a garage area that has a seven-foot height, which is pretty much the minimum you can do, he's proposing a first-floor level that has an eight-foot ceiling height, he's proposing a second-floor level that has an eight-foot ceiling height, and he's proposing a partial third-floor level that has a varying height, I think that maxes out at about seven feet. If you add those numbers up, and you add the floor structure in, and you add the elevation of the slab that we're proposing in, what it comes to, is it comes to a building peak, a roof peak, that is 18 inches higher than what your ordinance currently permits. So, that is the reason for the variance request this evening. This home, could this home be built with the parking below to meet the ordinance? It actually could, we could put the garage slab at an elevation four, it would be, you know, an inch or two above the curb out front, he could use the garage, it's just not a good engineering plan, it's not a good flood prevention plan, and we have an opportunity here to develop a house that is 18 inches higher than what your ordinance permits, and provides off-street parking, provides a much better condition for this property itself, and we think it's something that's very appropriately asked for.
John, if, like you said, if the garage were at the current...
There will be water in the garage, that's correct.
You're familiar, interrupt you one more time.
Yep.
You're familiar with the property to the right that is for sale, the corner property?
I am.
And you have spoken to prospective purchasers concerning that property?
I have.
Have you shared that with the board, and what some of those inquiries have been?
Yes, we've had, we've had a couple of inquiries on that property, and this is, as I'm probably sure everybody in this room and on this board knows, this is a location...
We're speaking of the corner property?
Yeah, I'm sorry, right at the intersection of Fulton and Rumsen Avenue, the corner piece, the absolutely beautiful piece of property. But this is a location everybody's aware floods, and the couple of calls that we've gotten so far on that property with people looking at it is, can I raise it, how high can I go, I know it floods, if I'm going to build a brand-new house there, I need to get it out of harm's way. So, a similar request, or something close to that, I think is likely going to be coming to this board in the future because of the situation that we have here, this is a relatively unique condition.
Roger, I interrupt, if you want to speak, who respects some of the other properties?
Yeah, what I wanted to mention is, so, I think we've established why we're asking for the 18 inches. So, the question then, in my mind, is how out of line is it with what's around it? You know, are we proposing a building that's at elevation, and again, I'm going back to elevation for comparison purposes, in an 88 datum, the peak of this roof will be elevation 40.5. 40.5. Are we proposing a house that has houses along Rumsen Avenue that are all at elevation 30 and we're going to be 10 feet above them? It would be hard to justify that if we're that out of character. So what we did is we sent our survey crew out to shoot some of the elevations of the other houses along Rumsen Avenue. Obviously, we didn't shoot the house next to us because it's only a one-and-a-half-story house. It's probably destined for demolition at some time in the relatively near future. But we did the houses as we go down the row that, you know, from our house heading down Rumsen toward the ocean. The house immediately adjacent to us, 354 North, is just over elevation 39. So we're only about 18 inches higher than that house. That house is two-and-a-half stories, but it has a very, very low first floor. So it actually is a very high house, starting when you look at it from the floor itself. The next house, 352, the peak of it actually goes to elevation 42. So that's about 18 inches higher than what we are proposing. The next house is slightly over elevation 38. That's about two-and-a-half feet below what we're proposing. And the next house is right at elevation 39. So the reason I wanted to show you this is, out of the four houses immediately next to us, knowing that you're going to see, you know, a beautiful home come on the corner, the four houses that are immediately next to us are all within 18 inches of us. Some 18 inches above us, some 18 inches below us. We're right in the median with what's adjacent to us. So we are not out of character in any fashion with what has been built along the lagoon in this area. I was just going to say, so our request, we have, you know, Mr. Dugan has looked at this at great lengths, and I think Mr. Obelenis and Mr. Ballson also mentioned it. Our request is, we think, very well thought out. Mr. Dugan is not asking for nine- or 10-foot ceilings in his living space. He's asking for the absolute minimum he can accomplish to still get that garage slab to a point that makes him comfortable that he's got some further protection from flood.
John, and the 18 inches, as we discussed, that's not good enough.
No, that is not...
Perfect situation.
That is not a cure-all. In a hard northeast storm with a heavy rain, elevations greater than 5.5 are achieved sometimes with floodwaters, there is a potential for a flood still. If I had my way from an engineering standpoint, I would probably try to take this garage at least another six inches or a foot higher, but now we're getting to the, you know, to the three-foot range in height variance, and we didn't think that that was appropriate to request.
Talk about the three purposes the Muse Milanus Act that are addressed.
Certainly.
Did we touch upon those, please?
Certainly. There are three, in our opinion, three specific purposes of zoning that are advanced here. We're taking down a home, and you'll hear from Mr. Dugan, that has had a repetitive flood loss circumstance going on. I think Mr. Dugan can speak to it, but it's more than a handful of times that Mr. Dugan has had some major loss at this property. So we are removing a property from your tax rolls that is a repetitive loss. We are... Through Mr. Obelenis's design, we are creating, you know, we believe a beautiful home on this property that will create a desirable visual environment, which is a purpose of zoning, as you know. The second purpose of zoning that we are advancing, which I already started to talk about, is with regard to protection from flood. This building, its living space will be well clear of the flood, of the minimum flood requirements, and even its storage and parking area, we're trying to make as clear as possible from flooding concerns. And third, and lastly, the purpose of zoning that we believe is advances in this application is promotion of free flow of traffic. We have a location that Mr. Rubin's report, in my opinion correctly, states, this is a tight location. It's kind of a... It's somewhat of a blind corner. It's densely populated with homes, as you know. In the summertime, parking is at a premium. We are able to provide two off-street parking spaces at this location where there currently are none. It's obviously a benefit to the Dugans, but it's a benefit to the neighbors as well, and it brings a non-compliant parking condition into compliance. So for those reasons, we believe that that purpose of zoning is advanced.
Do you see any negatives associated with this application?
The two prongs, obviously, of the negative criteria are with respect to any negative associated with the public good and the surrounding land uses. And I think that you'll hear through Mr. Ballson and Mr. Dugan, he's spoken to all of his neighbors, and they are all in full support of this application, which is very important to an application like this. And the second prong is with regard to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. I think I've discussed the existing non-conformities and the setbacks and the coverage are really a function of the exceptional narrowness of the lot. And I believe that the height is a function of the unique location and the lowness of this specific piece of property. So we have, you know, we have... This is one of those cases where you have a true balancing act that you're trying to accomplish. We are requesting a number of variances. We don't doubt that. But we believe that the variances are well thought out. We think that Mr. Dugan has spent a lot of time making certain that he's not creating a negative situation for his neighbors. He's talked to them many times, had a number of meetings. He's minimized to the greatest extent he possibly can both the width of the structure so that he keeps those setbacks, the requests to a minimum, and the height of the structure so that he's not out of character with the neighborhood. So for all those reasons, we think the zone plan and zoning ordinance is protected even with the granting of these variances.
Thanks, John. Good job. Any questions for Mr. Barnhart?
I'm assuming of the other properties that we looked at on either side, Mr.... The Dugan property is the only undersized lot amongst those...
Those lots are all much larger, that's correct.
So they're in conformance, those lots?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chris, I just have one question for John. Is that elevation on the curb level, is that the lowest in Margate, or...
You know, I'm not sure about it. If it's the absolute lowest, Tom, it's close. It's close. Washington Avenue has a couple spots that are pretty low, but this might be the lowest. I'm sorry? Lancaster's low, you think, is it?
You're below three? You're below three foot?
When you have a flood on an average moon tide, you know you're low.
Tom, please. Tom, you have owned this property...
1968.
Get the board a little bit of the history, and we've been here a long time.
My parents bought the home in 1968, and I took ownership of it in 1996. I was raised there, my brothers and sisters were. My children have been raised there, are still being raised there, and we kind of like this place down here. I have always described it as, to my friends, as my shack at the shore, my little slice of paradise. And hopefully, with your affirmative vote tonight, I can get rid of that shack at the shore part.
Thank you.
A number of flood claims arising at this property?
Since 1980, we've had seven claims. And we've had other ones that were closed that we just didn't submit, or I didn't submit because I didn't want to overtax my flood insurance situation. So seven claims since 1980, and more so just recently, since 1997. Because we do see that tide and the storms becoming more intense and having more circumstances where we have to worry about flooding.
Tom, you have spoken to all of your surrounding neighbors before this plan was submitted for approval, is that right?
Absolutely. I spoke to every neighbor. Every neighbor applauds my endeavors to try and have this house built. They know the problems that we've gone through year after year, and they're all very supportive.
Tom, I have letters here, I'm not going to read them, but I have letters from Trufos and AD... 7 Rumsen, 354 Rumsen, 882.
No, not at all. They're all in full support. In fact, Mrs. Forbes will be delighted because I won't have to park my car on her driveway any longer every time we have a heavy rainstorm.
I was going to ask you more questions. I think the board gets the...
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I have one question. Did you try to buy any land from your neighbor who has...
I may.
Have you tried to buy any land from your neighbors?
Yes, I did. I tried last year, and she did not want to break up her property. And, you know, I thought I had a shot at her for a little while. Actually, we spoke with Roger Ruben about it, John and I, to see if it was possible that she could still subdivide, and she refused.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Clem, turn your mic on, please.
For the architect? John, I'm in sympathy with all your problems with this little lot, but I have a problem with the four-foot side yard setback. And I look very closely at the plan, and I don't see why it wouldn't work with our minimum five-foot setback.
Well, again, if you... On the floor plan, on that one side, we have a call to utilities, which is the bathrooms, the powder rooms, the stairs, the kitchen, elevator, machine rooms. We have that set to one side, and then when you backtrack from there into a hallway, once you have the stairs on the one side, you have to get around the stairs. So that creates another dimension that eats into the space itself. So we have the stairwell, we have utilities, we have the corridor now that is around the stairs to get up to the floors above, and then what's left over is the living space, which is the living, the bedrooms. And if we pull that in, yes, we can pull it in, but then the rooms are, you know, smaller. The bedrooms upstairs are almost non-functional. You can't walk around the bed. Once you have the bed set up against the wall, you know, they get too narrow and stuff. So the idea that we have this corridor around the stairs, again, vertically up and down, anything that eats into that space eats into the living space that's pretty much left over. Yeah, approximately, yeah. So we're going to take away from those spaces, which are basically the living and sleeping spaces. And again, that was why we loaded everything to one side, that to create that flow and open up the space to one side, again, for living and for views and stuff like that.
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Please be sworn in.
Hi, everybody. I'm here because I'm a neighbor of the Dugans. I live right around the corner. We met basically because our kids all played in the street together as they flooded. Not once a year and not twice a year, but probably three or four times a year. Tom, replants twice a year because the floodwaters ruin his flowers. So even though they're asking for variances, they do such a beautiful job with their home and they're such good neighbors that it's going to improve the neighborhood a lot, and I think it would be really nice if they were to vary. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public portions. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Would you...
I have one question. What was the... Did you give a height for the bulkhead, or does it just have to match the deck at 9?
I think we're going to go with the deck height, which was 7'7", right, Chris?
7'7"?
7'7"88.
Okay. Okay. Right.
That's mine.
So that'll be revised plans showing those two feet.
Essentially, it's C variances for a number of items. Mr. Rubin's report adequately laid them out. But just to summarize for the record, a height variance of 29 and 1/2 feet with the required 28 feet, it's 18 inches higher. The lot width, which is an existing non-conforming issue, proposed 32, required 40 feet. Lot area, 2,221 Upland, required 2,750. Side setback, four feet, is proposed, and it requires five feet. Combined setback, proposed nine feet, required 11.84 feet. Distance between principal building, 6.67 feet, required 10 feet. Landscape area total, 23%, required 35%, and front landscape, 47%, required 60%. With the condition, which is by consent of the applicant, the bulkhead height, seven feet, seven inches, datum 1988, and the deck will be eight feet, seven inches, plus any other additions?
That's going to be 8.7 and 7.7.
Okay. 8.7? Got you. Okay.
8.7 feet, 7.7 feet.
Got you.
8.4 inches.
8.7 feet.
And satisfaction of city engineering report.
And satisfaction of the city engineering report.
Without motion, would I...
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. I don't think I've ever seen a curb height that low in this city. It's very de minimis to me. I think there's no negative impact on the neighborhood. I give credit to Jim Gallantino for making sure we get the bulkheads up high and the decks up high. He's done a great job in mediating all our flood to give us these discounts, and I think we need to maintain it.
I only have a problem with that four-foot setback. I think it could easily be five, but since it doesn't seem to bother anybody else on the board, I'll vote a reluctant yes.
Mike Richmond?
I'm going to vote yes. I think it's important. We just built a house in that area, and I know how it floods, and I think it's important to get the houses up in that neighborhood, so I'm going to vote yes.
Joe Gallantino?
I commend counsel and the architect and the engineer for working together and getting the bulkhead higher, which is going to be an asset to that street if we can get the water to stop coming in. I vote yes.
I'm in favor of the application. I think the variances are justified. I believe it is a hardship based upon the fact that it is an undersized lot in a low-lying area, and I think you did a great job together.
I'm also in favor of the application. The side setbacks are no problem. There's a garage on each side, and raising the houses up, it's what we have to do. I approve it.
Really feel that it's deserving of a yes in that neighborhood.
A vote in favor of the application. I believe each of the variances are justified, and especially given the strong neighbor support, it's very telling that this is a positive project.
On paper, this looks like a very difficult case to approve, but I commend the professionals here for explaining the reason. I think, as you know, the height variances are very tough to get by here, but I also commend the applicant for having nothing in excess to force those heights. The other variances, I feel, are a hardship for the space because of the smallness of the lot, so I approve the application. Two-minute break.
Take my advice.
A lot across the street, vacant, right? So the next house up is like probably 160 or 170 feet away. I think it's a driveway's on that side. You know, it's way.
I will touch upon that briefly in a few more.
Now, some of the corners, they can design accordingly. The vacant lot, they can design accordingly.
Is there a reason we're, is there a reason this is so fast? How different is time so slow?
Here we go. Where are we? John R. De Filippo, Sr., 100 South Thurlow Avenue, Block 21, Lot 10, in the S-40 district. To grain a C variance for side setback building coverage and possibly others. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Presently, the De Filipos own and reside in a two-story brick house with a large attached garage structure on a double lot at the southwest corner of Thurlow and Atlantic Avenue. The house faces, the house front faces Thurlow, and the garage and driveways are on Atlantic Avenue. The lot is 80.08 feet along Atlantic and 105.55 along Thurlow, and is the subject of a buy-right subdivision being processed in the zoning office. When finalized, there will be two legal S-40 lots, and the corner lot will have 80.08 feet along Atlantic and 55.55 feet along Thurlow, and a total of 4,400 square feet, a slightly oversized S-40 lot. Once the subdivision is completed, the De Filipos, per the submitted plan by Peter Weiss, architect, wish to move the house onto the new corner lot, eliminate the attached garage, rotate at 90 degrees so the front faces Atlantic Avenue, retain the double driveway onto Atlantic Avenue, and place an oversized shed at the rear of said driveway, and place a second-floor deck above the large first-floor deck, which, because of the rotation, is now facing Thurlow Avenue. In addition to the above, the house will be raised to meet the new FEMA standards and ordinance 201317. Variance is required in comments. If approved, it must be conditional on completion and recordation of the subdivision. In these rather unusual circumstances, there should also be a firm time requirement for the moving of the house as approved to avoid having a house straddling two lots. There's a variance for front setback on Atlantic Avenue. Five feet is required versus four feet, 2 and 1/2 inches, at the Longport end of the house, widening to five feet, 7 and 1/2 inches, at the Atlantic City end. This is quite small, if not de minimis, and on average meets or exceeds the five feet required, especially considering the section toward Longport that is actually set back eight feet nearest that neighbor. So there is at least as much open space and landscaping as required. Also, this is partly the result of the fact that the Atlantic Avenue line is not parallel to the rear line of the house, and the architect wisely lined up the Thurlow Avenue frontage with the houses down Thurlow Avenue. There is a front setback variance on Thurlow. Per the 200-foot survey, the two-story porch should be 14.9 feet back versus 10 feet as laid out. The house should be 15.4 feet back versus 14.0 as laid out. This variance relates to board member site visits, as to whether or not there are view impediments created, or interference to any neighbors of light or air circulations, or issues of building mass on the street face. Consider angles of view from across Atlantic Avenue, and it appears unlikely that ocean views are impeded. Testimony from neighbors, if any show up, will be relevant, as well as your observations. There's a building coverage variance, 39 percent as laid out, 33 percent permitted. Consider overall building mass as smaller than a newly-built property could be by virtue of only 28 feet in total height compared to 30 feet permitted, and the absence of roof dormers in the attic, which contains only a storage area and a small study. Landscape area, 32 percent as shown versus 35 percent required. Consider as compensation the quite large area on the Atlantic Avenue front lawn, five feet in the public right-of-way that the owners will be retaining, as well as the 4 and 1/2 feet deep by 60-foot-wide curbside grass strip also being retained. Parking location. Driveways off Atlantic Avenue are not permitted in such cases, but as the driveway has always been at that location, and since there are four off-street spaces versus only two required, this seems almost a technicality. Side setback Thurlow, 10 feet required, that's on the left side, versus nine as shown. Consider first the combined side setbacks are 27 feet, 8 and 1/2 inches, while only 20 feet, 6 inches are required, so there is considerably more openness than the ordinance requires. Also consider that if this were an interior rather than corner lot, the side requirements would be only eight feet. Shed size, 80 square feet and nine feet in height is permitted. The proposed shed is 130 square feet and 12 feet high. The legal alternative would be a freestanding garage, which could be a variance-free, 250 square feet and 14 feet high. Also, this shed does not protrude forward as a garage would to block the windows of the house next door. That is, it does not block the windows. The board should not be influenced by the number of variances as much as by the particular explanation in terms of what you should take into account for each individual variance. Importantly, a stately brick house in traditional seashore architectural style is being preserved and appropriately cited, rather than the possible modernistic and potentially more massive new house, which could be done variance-free. No conditions are suggested at this time, other than as set forth above regarding essential timing for the house move.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Members of the board, my name is Chris Bayliss, and I represent John and Maria De Filippo. I'm happy to represent the De Filippo family with respect to what is a great application, I think, for the city of Hargie. The De Filipos at 100 South Thurlow Avenue have a buy-right S-40 subdivision, which they would like to take advantage of. Contrary to what we see these days, it is not demolition of a existing beautiful home, but De Filippo's desire to lift up this brick home, spin it, and put it up forward to Atlantic Avenue lot so they can stay there, in the home where they raise their family. In order to do which, I think, is an awesome, awesome application, and an awesome idea, I think, to bring for the city, and for their family.
Can you talk to them, Mike?
It does necessitate, and I'm not going to go through them because I have both Peter and Tiffany, it does necessitate a number of what I believe are de minimis variances. What I can tell you, though, is some of the things that John and Maria have done to minimize any impact to neighbors with respect to this application. The deck that you heard about on Thurlow Avenue, that will be an uncovered second-floor deck. The shed, the plan originally had a garage on it. When John saw the garage in the new garage, when John saw the driveway and the way it was oriented, and the fact that it blocked the neighbor on Atlantic Avenue's kitchen window, the garage came off the plan, and he put a shed there, a large shed, instead. The landscaping will remain along Atlantic Avenue. There will still be substantial landscaping along Thurlow Avenue. They are removing the two-car garage that is there now. They're cutting that off so the house can spin, and really, just about, which kind of astonished us all when he did it, really kind of fits on the lot with some variances of minor percentages with respect to coverage and minor distances with respect to setbacks. I'm not going to detail them. Peter can touch upon how he has reoriented the house on the lot, and Tiffany can give some planning testimony, and they can both be sworn in. But just go through with the board briefly what it...
The De Filipos came to me, and they wished to subdivide the property and maintain their house. And of course, the first thing they elected to do was remove the garage, because obviously the house wouldn't fit on the lot once we subdivided it, you know, if we kept the garage. So then I created a plan of the house without the garage, and sort of twisted it both ways. At first, I thought it was kind of crazy to turn the house, but it really didn't fit if it faced on Thurlow Avenue because of the shape of it. It fit pretty well if we turned it and faced on Atlantic Avenue, because then we're looking at relatively minor variances on each side, whereas if we turned it the other way or left it facing Thurlow, it would have been, you know, a lot more variances. So in essence, we're maintaining the structure, with the exception of the garage, so there's no real addition to anything. We're deleting pieces of it, and we're removing 16 and 1/2 feet of the garage. And once that's done, we're going to have to repair, if you will, the side where we're going to remove the garage. So what we hope to do is take all the existing bricks from the garage and salvage them and try to use those to rebuild that side of the house so it looks like it was originally part of the house. I just want to mention, with regard to landscaping, the intent is to, basically, since there's a lot of mature shrubs on the site now and trees, they plan to remove all of them and then put basically all of them back. So I think the landscaping scheme, when it's all said and done, will be very similar to what's there now, just in terms of the size and then the spacing of them and that kind of thing.
One of the things is there is a minor front yard on Atlantic Avenue, and the only possible concern I could imagine with respect to any ocean view impediment would be across Atlantic Avenue and then down Thurlow.
Correct.
Could comment upon that, knowing that the house that's the lot now across Thurlow?
Correct. So Atlantic Avenue is a 100-foot-wide street, as you know. The next lot up is presumably at least 50 feet wide. So the next house up the street is probably 160 to 170 feet up the street, which is a very long distance. So looking from that house towards the ocean, our, you know, 1.4-foot encroachment in the setback is going to be certainly negligible.
Yes, I am.
You haven't appeared before this board before?
It's been a while, but yes.
You have reviewed the De Filipos?
Yes, I have.
Would you go through those variances, please, for the board as if from a fresh person, and then provide variance justification testimony without me having to ask?
Sure. And Mr. Rubin did a great job of going through the variances, but just to point them out on the plan for you, as I hope not to miss them. Then we've got to turn it around. So the variances requested include a front yard setback along Atlantic Avenue, and the area of encroachment, this portion of the building is 4.2 and 1/2, 4 feet, 2 and 1/2 inches from Atlantic Avenue to the property line. There is additional landscape area that's in the right-of-way, or lawn area, then the sidewalk, and then another landscaped area. The property line is not directly straight, so at this end of the house, you have 5 feet, 7 and 1/4 inches, so we actually conform to the setback at the further corner of the property. So we need a front yard setback in this location. We also require a front yard setback along Thurlow Avenue. The requirement is 15.4 inches for the house, and we're proposing 15 feet, 4 inches for the house, so we're proposing 14 feet. And the requirement for the deck is 14.9 feet, and we're proposing 10 feet, and that's a two-story porch deck structure. We're also requesting a variance for the side yard setback along Thurlow Avenue. The requirement is 10 feet, and we are proposing 9 feet in this area. Additionally, we're requiring, requesting building coverage variance. You're allowed 33 percent, and we're proposing 39 percent. We're also requesting landscape area variance. We are required to have 35 percent, and we have 32 percent. And finally, we're requesting a variance for the shed, which is 130 square feet versus the minimum or maximum of 80 square feet. And just to put some of this into perspective, because we are requesting these variances under the C1 and the C2 criteria, the front yard setback along Atlantic Avenue is directly related to the fact that the lot line itself is not perfectly straight, and it actually goes on an angle. This dimension here for this side lot line is 52 feet, and this is 55 and 1/2 feet. So there is a discrepancy or a differential between the two property lines, which results in the need for the front yard setback along Atlantic Avenue. And we believe that that is a minor deviation, because for the most part, we actually comply with the setback requirement. And the house is setback consistent with other homes along Atlantic Avenue. We request the variance, and that's related to a C1 criteria for the hardship. It's related to the shape and the configuration of the lot. We request the variance on Thurlow for the setback. While we could technically comply, we could shift the house over and get the required setback on Thurlow. But if we were to do that, we would have to eliminate the two of the parking spaces in the driveway. And we believe that there's a benefit to that minor encroachment on Thurlow due to the fact that there really is no impediment down towards the ocean from Atlantic Avenue, given the width of Atlantic Avenue and the vacant lot across the street. We believe the benefit of maintaining the four off-street parking spaces and the greater setback between the buildings, which has existed for years, because that's where the current driveway is, offsets any potential detriments from that minor encroachment along Thurlow Avenue. With regards to the side yard setback, the nine-foot request here, we actually exceed the combined side yard setback. The combined side yard setback minimum for this zone is 20 feet. We have nine feet here and 18 and 8 and 1/2 inches over here for a combined total of about 27 feet. We believe that the one-foot reduction in the side yard setback along Thurlow Avenue does not create a substantial detriment, because we're creating extensive open space in the other side yard. In addition to that, as indicated in Mr. Rubin's report, if this were an interior lot, we would actually be permitted an eight-foot setback. So we're not out of character with the development that would otherwise be permitted in the area. With regards to the building coverage, we are requesting a 39 percent building coverage versus 33 percent, and that sounds like a lot, but out of perspective, that's 300 square feet, plus or minus. If we look at how that relates to the property, 300 square feet is a 10 by 30 area. If we look at how that relates to the property, 300 square feet is a 10 by 30 area. The benefits of being able to maintain this home that was built in 1945, relocate it and shift it so that it faces on Atlantic Avenue, as other homes, almost every other home in the area faces Atlantic Avenue, does, we believe that the benefits of allowing for that increased coverage of 300 square feet outweigh the detriments, because you get to keep this home, which is original to the community. We do request a variance for the landscape area, we are less than the required amount, we're at 32 percent. Again, that equates to 129 square feet less of lawn area. And in terms of what that impact is, is we have noted, the property line actually is located inside this lawn area. This lawn area along the sidewalk is not part of the property area. That lawn area is about 300 square feet, so, and that doesn't account for the grass areas on the other side of the sidewalk. So we're asking for a reduction of about 129 square foot in landscape area, and we want to recognize that we have about 300 square feet, that's not part of a property, that in all intensive purposes offsets that request. In addition to that, we believe, because we're going to maintain and transfer the existing vegetation that is much nicer than starting with brand-new vegetation in the smaller styles, the smaller shrubs, we have the larger, mature material that we're going to transfer over here, that also offsets the variance for the landscape area as well. And finally, with regard to the shed, the 80 square feet limit in your ordinance is for accessory structures, however, if we were to construct a garage, we could have a 250-square-foot garage. We believe the benefits of allowing the smaller shed at 130 square feet without a garage, allowing that open space in those four parking spaces to remain on the side of the property as they have for years, outweighs the detriments of allowing for a little bit larger shed. In terms of the standards underneath, under the meanest pollan use law, we have to demonstrate to you that we meet the positive and the negative criteria. In terms of the information that I just provided to you, I believe that you can find from that information that we do meet the positive criteria, that is that there are purposes of the zoning and the meanest pollan use law that are advanced, and that the benefits outweigh the detriment. We believe the preservation of the existing home, allowing it to be reoriented and lifted up, it's going to be lifted up to an elevation of 12 so that it helps protect from flooding, and maintains the stately homes in the area, continues to promote a purpose of zoning. We believe that the design of the property continues to promote adequate light air and open space, the deviations that we're requesting are not substantial deviations, we're maintaining the large open space on the sides of the property, and we do have extra lawn area around the property to offset the proposed development. In addition, we are not exceeding your height requirements, we're going to be at 28, we could technically go to 30 feet, so the building isn't going to be overly built on the property. We also believe by maintaining this structure, we are promoting a desired visual environment, and that is important, especially along Atlantic Avenue, that the development remains consistent with other homes in the area that have frontage on Atlantic Avenue where the homes front that way. There's several other brick homes similar in nature to this home that will be maintained in the area. In terms of the negative criteria, we do not believe there is a substantial detriment to your zoning ordinance or your master plan. In fact, your master plan in 2006 talks of several land use goals and objectives, which include to preserve and enhance the established residential character of Margate, and to protect existing residential neighborhoods from infill development of incompatible structures that are at a scale with a predominant neighborhood pattern. We believe by maintaining this home, allowing for the development to occur as it's permitted in the S40 zone, continues to promote those purposes of your master plan and your zoning ordinance, and therefore, there is no substantial detriment to the zone plan. We also believe that the overall benefits from this application outweigh the detriments, and there's no substantial detriment to the public good. We're maintaining appropriate views down Thurlow Avenue, we're maintaining a home that was built in 1945, over 68 years ago, that is characteristic of other homes in the area, and therefore, the benefits from the variances outweigh any potential detriments to the community.
Thanks, Tiffany. That's all the testimony we have this evening for that application. And did you know that this is the only house between Pembroke Avenue and the White Sands on that side of Atlantic, that the front door currently does not face Atlantic Avenue?
Could I also, Jackie, note for the record that Mrs. Scubernoli and Mr. Carter recuse themselves?
That's all we have, thanks, Rich. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board?
I have a variety of letters from the neighborhood, let's get this out again.
No, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Any further discussion from the board, any questions? Roger?
There has to be, there's a city engineer letter that has to be satisfied with regard to the subdivision, and how are we going to handle the matter of timing? Do you have any suggestions? Do they want, do they want to go ahead and, as I look at this, actually, they could go ahead and move the house immediately without the subdivision?
I think they have to, they'll have to split the division before, I think the city's always required that.
Okay.
I think, I think they have sufficient time to do that. If the city, if you guys would like to give me additional 190 days of business to report the subdivision, I'll do that. If I need to do that, I'll come back.
No.
Let's move the house before we report the subdivision. That's about eight months' worth of time, so that should be sufficient.
I think that's the right way to do it, then. Okay. Move the house, then record the subdivision.
So we're going to, Rod, so the processing on the permit, we're going to move the house with the permit, of course, with the approval of the board?
Correct.
Correct. So we can move forward with that?
Absolutely. Yep.
So it's on you to get the permit.
I can get a permit if it's blocked, we can figure it out later, is that?
Absolutely. Yes.
So how long is it going to be?
Say again?
How long is it going to be that you're going to try to...
Does not, does not.
So as long as it's...
No, I understand, then, then the, within the time provided, report the subdivision. I've got to move the house before I report the subdivision, 190 days, and the city resolves the stop, report the subdivision, so we should go back.
So we do have to do it in there? So 190?
There's no set date?
No, no.
I have to say with the orders.
Okay, there's a number of variance requests, as was, as the applicant stated. Mr. Rubin's report does summarize them greatly, but again, for the record, I'm going to place them on there. Front setback on Atlantic Avenue required 5 feet. The long port side of the property is the, I think is the smallest area, which would be 4 feet 2 and 1/2 inches. Front setback on Thurlow Avenue from the porch, 14.9 feet requested, proposed, I mean, 14.9 feet required, proposed is 10 feet. Thurlow front setback for the house required 15.4 feet, proposed 14 feet. Coverage, 33 percent is required, proposed is 39 percent. Landscape area, 35 percent is required, 32 percent is proposed. There has to be a variance for the parking location to the same areas it is now, which are the four spaces on the one side. Side setback on Thurlow Avenue, 10 feet is required, proposed 9 feet. And the shed size, the requirement is 80 square feet with 9 feet in height, they're exceeding that with 130 square feet, 12 feet in height. Conditions, as we already stated, would be prior to the recordation of the subdivision, they will move the property, and all the requirements as stated in the city engineer report.
I hear a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Didn't vote yet.
Sorry. Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application, I think it's a minor change to the neighborhood. I don't see any negative impacts to the neighborhood. Don't cherish the fact that we're subdividing a lot, but in this case, we're still gaining a beautiful home, and you're maintaining the property and the landscaping. I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood, so I vote in favor.
Mike Richmond?
I think just the mere saving of Dr. Stewart's old house justifies all the variances, especially consider the alternative, if it was knocked down, we'd get another McMister facing Atlantic Avenue, when it looks like they're having an ugly house contest as it is. I vote yes.
Mike Richmond?
I agree with Clem, and I'm going to vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
How do we know you were right on that, Dr. Stewart? I agree with Clem, and I agree with Mike. I say yes.
Commissioner Colby?
I'm not going to do that tonight. The D-philpos have a lovely stately home, and I'm happy to see it preserved and raised to prevent flooding. The variances requested are de minimis, considering what could be there if a brand-new home were constructed, and I vote yes.
I'm very happy to see an old house being remodeled, and the heights are, the heights are not overly high, and I can't wait to watch it happen.
Let us know.
I approve the project.
I also vote in favor of the application, I believe it's a wonderful idea to preserve a beautiful home, and I certainly believe that any benefits, or excuse me, any potential detriment are outweighed by all the benefits here.
I'm in agreeance with Tom Collins, I approve.
I'm in agreement with Despera Hassan, I approve.
lot 3.01, in the S40 district, to grant a C variance for garage location and possibly others. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property is a two-story, single-family house with attached garage on a lot of 60 by 129. The house is to be demolished and replaced with the one portrayed in the plans of Harry Harper, architect, which plans include a freestanding garage 3 feet from the house and close to the right-side neighbor's freestanding garage, looking identical in location and This appears to be the only variance for the house, but a complete zoning review of full schematic plans at some future date will still be necessary. Variance requested, the sole variance in this case is garage location. Section of the ordinance says garages shall be located no further forward than 26 feet from the rear lot line. In this case, due to the unusual long lot configuration, the proposed garage, its front is 83 feet forward of the lot line, rear lot line. Comments, the purpose of this obscure requirement was to keep freestanding garages from being located in such a way as to block light and air from neighboring houses. If they were located toward, if they were toward the rear, this would presumably preclude such interference, and in this case, the location with respect to the house to the right, and the fact that it exactly matches that neighbor's garage, satisfies the intention of the ordinance. Second, the location as proposed is consistent with the neighborhood pattern for freestanding garages. Three, the unusual lot depth has created a hardship necessitating the variance. Originally, Clermont-Clerenden, a paper street, had back-to-back lots, but over the years, Clerenden was abandoned, and lots were joined together, creating double-depth lots like this one. If the garage actually complied with zoning, it would create an unnecessarily long driveway, less permeability, a disruption of backyard enjoyment, and a long walk to the house from the garage with packages. No conditions are suggested at this time. The applicant is duly informed that a thorough zoning review will take place upon presentation of complete schematics.
Representative Kevin and Michelle Entress. Kevin is behind me, his neighbor Carl is next to him. Neighbor Carl has the exact same configuration as his house, but Kevin and Michelle desire their house. They are year-round family, I'm happy to keep one of my testimonies to present, I will rely upon Mr. Rubin's report. If anybody has any questions, Carl, they are here to answer those questions. I'm sorry for taking up some time earlier this evening, therefore, I'm not going to give you any testimony. Thank you.
Chris, you want to swear him in? Because I have a question.
Chris, before he testifies, we'll just mark the plans and evidence, because we're going to rely upon them.
The plan that's submitted with the application?
Yes.
The question I have is the runoff for the garage, just to make sure it doesn't go onto Carl's property, that's the only thing I'm worried about.
Runoff in the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to have a gutter right next to...
I just want, I want to make sure Carl's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no.
You want to swear him in, Tim?
Yeah, it'll run to the road, yeah, we'll have a gutter that'll run it to the road. We all have a gutter on our side of the garage, and he'll have one on his side, yeah.
Because you got, you got five, something like, looks like 5 inches on the plan?
He has 5 inches on one side of the property, and I have 5, so it's 10, yeah. And we're going to actually, we've talked, we're going to put something between it, a little fencing, just to close it off, so no gutter trash or anything gets in there, so.
Just one happy neighbor's, that's all.
I'm going to put the vinyl siding on the 10...
Going to do masonry up the side on that side, I think, so.
Anyone here from the public who would like to testify? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Any more comments from the board? Hearing none. Would I like to hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll vote in favor of the application, it's very minor, and I obviously don't think it's going to have any detrimental impact to his neighbor.
I vote in favor, it's a no-brainer.
Mike Richmond?
I vote in favor.
It's going to match existing garage of the next-door neighbor, and I think it's an asset to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, I am going to do it. Like Tom, Clem, Mike, and Jim, I concur.
I vote in favor, yes, for the same reasons Brenda did.
Greg Collins, sir?
I vote in favor of the project. I feel that voting against this would be, have negative impact, so I vote in favor.
Thank you all very much. This is 9 to nothing.
Next case is Harvey and Marcia Tesler, 8307 Salem Road, block 10.02, lot 13, in the S40 district, to grant a C variance for rear setback, side setbacks, and possibly others. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin?
I do.
The subject property is a two-story, single-family house on an irregular triangular-shaped lot with 108 feet of curved frontage on Salem Road, depth of 55.38 feet on the right side only, and a rear line which is 91.4 feet along a 10-foot-wide public alley. Total lot area is 3,024 square feet. The house presently, and after renovations, will still have three bedrooms. It has a front porch, an unroofed deck above at the front-left corner, looking at the house from the street. Per the plan submitted by Terry Cummings, architect, the following is proposed: a roof over the existing aforementioned front second-floor deck; a right-side second-floor addition to enhance the master bedroom with an enlarged bathroom and sitting room; cantilevered 1 feet 6 inches over the first floor in the rear; a second-floor deck off of the sitting room over the parking space, with full roof measuring 17 feet 4 inches wide by 11 feet 6 inches deep. This will also serve as a partial carport. Also, raising the existing roof by 3 feet 2 inches and thereby increasing the roof pitch from 612 to 912. from 612 to 912 and raising the wall height by 1 and 1/2 feet all around. If approved, full compliance with FEMA regulations will control moving forward. As to the 50 percent rule, wherein houses must be raised to require first floor, to the required first-floor elevation if improvements exceed 50 percent of assessed value of house only. Variance is required. There is a possible front setback variance for buildup of the house walls, as mentioned. It is 10 feet from the front property line to the front wall buildup. The applicant did not submit front setback data for the house. We'll have same at the hearing to clarify this matter. Right-side setback. Regarding the new second-floor enclosed space and roofed deck, 10 feet is required versus 5.05 feet as designed and presented. Rear yard setback, 10 feet is required versus 5.06 to the rear of the second-floor addition and the rear of the entire house regarding the wall and roof buildup. Comments, as always, site inspections are important in terms of impacts, if any, to neighbors. In this instance, the house to the right should be looked at in terms of possible issues of mass, privacy, lighting, air, or view obstruction via the second-floor addition, the new deck, partial carport, and the roof over the deck. As to the rear setback, the considerations are the additional mass within the, within the 5 feet in which it is not allowed, from the point of view of the house to the right and the houses in the rear. Three, the board may also consider the lot is undersized by about 25 percent and shaped in such a way that the house originally had to be built to the right side where the buildable area was, and thus, future enhancements had to skew rightward as well. Finally, with the, with the additions, landscaping remains high at 43 percent versus only 35 percent required. Front landscaping is at 75 percent versus 60 percent required, and building coverage at 33 percent is less than the 35 allowed. Also, total height is only 23 feet 10 inches above required first-floor elevation, which is 6 feet 2 inches less than permitted, even with the wall and roof buildup. As always, architectural style and upgrades may be considered, as well as overall neighborhood pattern, and massing within the cloistered complex of this special development area within Margate.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, members of the board, for the record, Keith Davis from the law firm, Niamh Perillo and Davis, appearing on behalf of Harvey and Marsha Tesler. As you've indicated, Mr. Rubin, this application concerns property located at 8307 Salem Road. This is a rather minor addition. We are not expanding the footprint in any way. We are merely going up. As Mr. Rubin indicated, no new bedrooms will be established. There's three bedrooms currently. There will be three bedrooms post-development. The applicant's or desires of expanding their existing master bedroom by adding a master bath and additional sitting area and enclosing a porch. The expansion on the second floor is 192 square feet. The applicants have hired Terry Cummings as their architect. She has prepared the plan of development that's before you that we believe is a very attractive plan of development and will enhance Salem Road with its addition of a covered porch and columns and other decorative elements that she'll describe in the testimony this evening. We have provided the required public notice, of course, and that's what made, submitted to the, the board secretary. I have two witnesses tonight. Mr. Chairman, we can both have them sworn in. I have Ms. Terry Cummings, who's here, and also Mr. Harvey Tesler. Cummings, if you could come forward first. Have you ever had the opportunity to provide any testimony to this board?
I have.
Why don't you take this? And do you do a licensed architect, is that your?
I am.
And how long have you held that license?
Twenty-two years.
Can you describe to the board what is existing on the property, correct?
What I'd like to show you is the existing home, which is the exact same footprint and the same site plan as what we are proposing. This is the house today and it sits on the lot and it has an eight-foot ceiling on the first floor, but the second floor has a wall height of only 6 foot 6. And that's not the third floor, that is the second floor. It has a particularly low head height and then it has a very low sloped roof. The ceiling at the highest point on the second floor is only at 7 foot 6 and we have a low-sloped ceiling. Up in our attic space, we hold all the electric and HVAC work and getting up there for any storage or to maintain those utilities is extremely difficult and has been a problem. So, we have previously renovated the first floor here and made it completely handicapped accessible about six years ago, and it works very well. The second floor, however, was not touched and you can see from the small drawing, it has three very small bedrooms and two extremely small bathrooms. And the bathrooms do not even come close to meeting code and are very, very tiny. So what we wanted to do in this renovation is to renovate the second floor, right here, and all we want to do is enlarge the existing bathrooms, making it up to code and a little bit more spacious, and add a little bit more space to the front bedroom and move one of the bathrooms to the back here. So in order to do that, we've rearranged it without touching the footprint at all. We have an existing uncovered front porch that exists today. We would like to cover it simply because this is south-facing, extremely hot, making the second floor porch is not terribly usable. And in addition, at this part of the house, there's actually a nice view off to the left side, where you get a little bit of a water view. So we wanted to provide a new front porch covered that would be accessible from the master bedroom and shaded so that it would be usable. It also would act as a carport over the one and only parking space that we are able to locate on the site. So what we're actually building on is an existing one-story piece of the first floor that is already there. We are building up a second floor of 192 square feet. That is just slightly over 10 percent of the house. And we are candle livening it out just a foot and a half so that we can line up the back wall of the house to make the roof simple and straightforward and give them that little bit of space they need in order to fit the new bathroom in. And since that backs up against the alleyway, it really does not interfere with any of the neighbors on that side. Up here in the front elevation, you can see the new elevation of the house. And what we've done is we've created a full eight-foot ceiling, again, second floor, not third floor, just second. We do not have a third floor in this house. We are asking that we raise the roof up a little bit so that we can get to that mechanical equipment, provide a minimum of storage up there. It will never be turned into a bedroom. It is meant simply as an attic. As you see, we have no place to put another stairway. So the intent is simply to get a full height for Harvey, who is six feet tall, so he doesn't have to bend down upstairs, and then provide storage and utility space upstairs.
And the work we're doing to the bathrooms, will that bring the bathrooms up to code?
Yes, it will.
There are three bedrooms currently, correct?
There are.
And there will be three bedrooms post-development, is that right?
Yes, there will.
Can you show the board members where the carport?
Yes. There's right now the existing space for one car. We would have liked to actually get two cars on the site if the site permitted it. We tried very hard to do that, but sadly, there is a drainage pipe located right here and there's no way to get to parking spaces. So we're straggling the pipe and getting the one car, which is current today. We are maintaining that one space. And the deck that we're proposing slides right over the top, making a cover for the, for the space.
As part of the plan of development, it will be existing footprint?
Not in any way.
Now, we do require some variances, the first of which?
Okay. Right now, we have a 5.06 setback from the footprint of the house. And our requirement is, I didn't want to misread it, rear yard is, is 10. So, but we're not making it a condition any worse than it is today. We're simply building this small section that you see highlighted right there to conform with the rest of the house.
But because the house is going, we're adding to the second floor, that?
That is correct. But it's a very small piece of the house.
And is that same condition present with respect to the side?
Yes. As I said, the footprint hasn't changed any. It's already non-conforming, but by adding that second small piece right here, we are continuing up that side wall of the house, hence requiring the variance.
And that's currently 5.05 feet, where 10 feet is required?
Yes, it is.
There's also a minimum setback requirement?
Yes. The new porch is not having any restrictions at all, but the existing porch, even though it's there, by putting a roof over and covering it, that requires the issue at that 3.2, which is a little bit closer than the, the average of the block by several inches.
Finally, and this is?
We have no problem with the porches at all. In fact, most of the porches supersede the setback. However, we just got the paperwork about two days, two days ago from the survey of doing the front yard setbacks. And if you delete the property in question and the highest and the lowest, the average is approximately, we'd have to do the math, a little over 11 feet. And we only have setback at, I'm sorry, it's not drawn here, but the setback is 10 feet to the house from the curb at a, at a right angle. So we would, if the board decides, we would require that setback variance.
The side marked is exhibit A5 and the others? It is A2, A3, and A4, and then I also?
Just to clarify what she just said, point to that corner of the house that that applies to. It's only a one-foot little tip on that corner, right there?
There.
Well, we're talking about the house, not the porch.
Right there. Just one little tiny?
No, that's, that's more than 10 feet.
That's the 10.02.
That's the 10?
And, and according to that, I believe we need 11.3, 11.6. 11.6.
So it's the first foot of that little corner?
Correct. That little corner, taking it in a diagonal in that direction. That's all.
Okay. With respect to that tip, this corner, are we proposing to add any additional second-floor area to the home in that area?
No, that is the point where we are simply raising the ceiling of the second floor a little bit higher and making the roof a little bit steeper than the original roof. That's all.
That's approximately 1 and 1/2 feet?
Approximately 1 and 1/2 feet.
The bulk of the expansion is on the front side of the lot, correct?
Yes.
And what is the front yard setback area where the bulk of the expansion is taking place?
I don't think I have that dimension here, but it is, it is probably a little over 20 feet.
So that would conform that area?
Yes. Yes. And I did want to mention also that even though we are providing a much new taller roof, we are still not more than 6 feet beneath the require, height requirement of the area so that we are still well below any of the other houses in the neighborhood.
Now, the lot in question, which is shown here, is it an existing, isolated, undersized lot, correct?
Yes, it is.
And is the applicant able to acquire an additional land to either conform or nearly conform the lot area same?
No, we cannot.
And that's because there, now the way behind is an existing developed lot next to us, correct?
Correct.
And the structure in question is an existing wall holding, wall existing structure on the property?
Yes.
And the footprint's not changing at all, correct?
Correct.
Do all of the variances that we're requesting relate to the undersized nature of the lot and the unique aspects, the shape of this property and the existing location of the home lot?
Yes, it does. There was, we are simply building on the original footprint. We can't move the house or don't want to move the house, so we are limited by the footprint because we are simply going a foot and a half higher on the second floor.
So the rear side and front yard setback is a variant? These are traditional hardship variances because of the location of the one on the property?
I think all the reasons we need the variances are because of the shape, size, and location of the house on the lot.
In terms of advancing any purposes of zoning, do you believe we provide a desirable?
Yes. While the house is very nice and simple and has been in their home for several decades, I believe the design that we're proposing, which has some very decorative columns surrounding the carport area and holding up, and the new peaked roofs add some nice visual texture to the house and some nice visual aspects to the house.
In terms of the negative impact to the public good in the zone plan?
No, I don't believe that it has any impact. Nothing behind them, to the right, in front of them, and the neighbor to the left is not, her views are not changed at all by the, by this addition.
We also require variance in the lot area, of course, because we're undersized. That variance is warranted as well?
Yes, because the lot cannot be expanded.
And then finally, we do not need the?
One is current and we are not adding any bedrooms, so we haven't changed the ratio from what was before.
So there's no intensity in terms of the density?
No, not at all. It was three before and it will still be three.
Very good. No further questions of this witness? Have you, have you and your family got an ownership of this property?
Since 1984.
And why are you pursuing this expansion?
We're looking for more space on the, on the second floor and have a nicer bathroom.
And to have some storage in the attic area?
And more storage in the attic and not have to crawl up there to put the chairs away in the wintertime.
And have you had an opportunity to discuss your plans with?
Yes, I have.
And you've comprised her as to the nature of this expansion?
Yes.
No further questions of this witness, and that concludes our pre?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Palmisano, you have a question? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Any further comments from the board? Stand.
Requires 3C variances, right side on the second floor, enclosed space and roof deck. The, sorry, the requirement is 10 feet. Proposed is 5.05 feet. Rear yard setback required 10 feet. Proposed 5.06 feet. That was previously existing condition. And the front setback, as testified to tonight and clarified, required 11.6 feet. Proposed 10 feet. And the lot area actually is an existing non-conforming, but it is technically a variance.
Mr. Chairman, this, this does not have to be a condition of the approval, but the board should understand and the applicant, I'm sure, understands that if this is approved, the building inspector has 100 percent prerogative to refuse a building permit if it doesn't meet the requirement of our ordinance that the house has to be raised 2-foot elevation if the cost of the improvements exceed 50 percent of the assessed value of the, of the improvement of the building itself. So that's just something that I want to be in the, clearly in the record and that, that will be Mr. Gallantino's call at the appropriate time when they apply for a building permit. And he'll, he'll make that call.
If they have to raise it, would that create any further variances?
If they, if they have to raise it, it will, no, actually it will not.
No? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
I vote in favor of the application. I think there's really no negative impacts to the neighborhood. Terry, I commend you on maintaining the integrity and the character of that house. I mean, fitting it in, keeping it into the neighborhood. Mr. Tesler, you're doing a great job on that, so I vote in favor.
I also vote in favor. This is a unique piece of property in a unique area of Margate and I think the visual enhance, enhancements proposed more than offset any negative aspects.
I vote in favor. I think Terry did a nice job on the design and I think it'll be a nice improvement to the neighborhood.
The variances for, was that still a possible front yard setback for that deck? Is that included?
Front yard setback areas from the house.
Not the house, okay. And then a rear yard setback? Those are the two variances we're voting on tonight? And side. I, I vote in favor. I vote in favor.
I think the variances requested are de minimis, in my opinion, considering the existing nonconforming setback, too. The addition and the aesthetic enhancements are visual, are going to benefit the neighborhood visually, and so I vote yes.
I vote in favor of the application and concur with the other members, the reasons of the other members of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Palmisano?
I also vote in favor of the project. It's a nice addition to the neighborhood.
For the aforementioned reasons, I also vote in favor.
Okay.
Next case is Roberto Deomarcus, 17 South Washington Avenue, Block 126, Lot 109 in the S-25 CBD District. To grant a minor subdivision, C variance for lot width and other, D variance for first-floor residential in CBD zone. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin. Yes. The subject property is a two-story triplex containing three dwelling units with a total of seven bedrooms and a lot 35 feet wide, stretching 211 feet all the way to Decatur Avenue, thus having two fronts and with a total area of 7,385 square feet. While this is one single lot, it is split into two zoning districts. Excuse me, 111 feet back from Washington Avenue, it is CBD, and the remaining 100 feet to Decatur Avenue is MF. The zoning division line coincides with all the other back-to-back lots, Washington to Decatur. This property is the only curiosity that has consolidated street-to-street lot within the two-zone categories. The proposal herein, as set forth in the Peter Weiss Architect Plans, the Ponziyo Company Subdivision and site plans, is to demolish the triplex, subdivide into two lots at precisely the zoning division line, and construct on Washington Avenue a duplex and on the newly separate Decatur Avenue lot, a single-family house. Minor subdivision, the actions require a minor subdivision, one lot to two. Lot A on Washington would be 35 by 111, 3,885 square feet, exceeding the minimum area of 3,200 square feet required for a duplex by 21%. Lot B on Decatur would be 35 by 100 or 3,500 square feet, exceeding the requirement of 2,500 square feet for a single-family house by 40%, and also exceeding the area required for a duplex, even though they are just requesting a single-family house on Decatur. Second, a D variance for a duplex on Washington in the CBD zone. The CBD zone does not permit new developments unless there is commercial retail usage on the first floor. The property being demolished, the triplex, has not had a commercial use in it for half a century, even though this was a more commercial street in days gone by. It should not be thought of as a subversion of the intent of the CBD zone to convert a triplex to a duplex in a more modern building at FEMA flood elevation. In recent decisions, this board has resisted converting stores and restaurants to strictly residential usage so as to preserve the intent of the master plan and zoning code, which subscribes to a diversity of land uses as essential to the quality of life in Margate. But decades of commercial zoning and no commercial usage, as well as several other strictly residential properties on Washington Avenue both sides, instructs toward a reasonable conclusion that this is an exception that does little damage or disrespect to the ordinance. Lot width on both lots, 35 feet is required versus a minimum requirement of, 35 feet is there versus a minimum requirement of 40 feet for both the duplex and the single-family home as proposed. The deficiency is because of the existing configuration, which cannot be enlarged. Keep in mind, as stated above, that lot areas exceed minimums on both new lots, and as always, site inspections will indicate appropriateness of the new construction as proposed as to whether or not the lot width shortage impacts neighbors or the street face in general. Combined side setbacks, while both structures meet each one side setback of five feet on both sides, there is a requirement for combined to be 37% of lot width or 12.95 feet. Consider that coverage by the single-family building is lower than permitted and landscape area is higher. And finally, building coverage for the duplex, 47% shown versus 35.6% permitted. The applicant testimony will be solicited to justify same, and the board may also consider the improvement in front and side setbacks and considerable improvement in landscape area and plantings as opposed to concrete, as now exists. A few additional considerations. The two buildings are in two height zones, with the duplex being in Zone A, allowing only 28 feet above required first floor. The plans show 30 feet for the duplex. But conversations with the engineer and attorney indicate that if approved, they can lower the height to conform, and if so, eight sets of revised plans will be required to show same. Likewise, there is a small rear setback variance of about 8.4 inches. 21 and 1/2-foot setback versus required 22.2 feet for the duplex, which the applicant will eliminate in revised plans. Also, the engineer requirements, as per the letter that was submitted for the subdivision, will be satisfied by revised plans. The board should consider modern architecture at flood levels, 10 parking spaces, while only six are required. The fact that the Decatur property is big enough in area for a duplex but is only to be a single-family house, and the upgrade in openness and landscape area for the complex as a whole. The total lot area of 7,385 square feet could have been developed with a triplex plus stores, but the proposed configuration is more respectful of Decatur Avenue as well as Washington. Other than as stated above, there are no additional suggestions, suggested conditions if approved. Sit, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, and thank all the board members. I know you've had two nights in a row of meetings, or the last one, so thanks for sticking around. I'm Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, with the name John Barnhart Peter Weiss. I know they've been sworn already, but if you'd like them to be sworn in again, you ready to go? Okay. John, if you don't mind, please just walk us through what's at the site now, the existing triplex on Washington, and how that's going to change with the three units going to two on Washington and the single-family home that Mr. Marquez is going to live in on Decatur.
Okay, the property in question is, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. The property in question is, it's an interesting lot. It's 35 feet wide, and it is 211 feet deep. It runs from Washington Avenue all the way to Decatur Avenue, a pretty unique piece of property. On the property, you can see sits an existing brick building that is right up on the front property line of Washington Avenue, and it is a triplex. It's three residential units, it's my understanding, it's been that way in excess of 50 years or so. The back of the property, you can see, is vacant and has a concrete driveway across it and has not been utilized for any development purposes at this point. The surrounding land uses, you can see the former Maloney's site, which is a mixed use of residential above commercial. Immediately adjacent to us, you have a number of residential uses in a row. Mr. Abbott's office here, and then you get to the Historic Society, and then the, I guess, the former City Hall. Across the street, again, you have a mix of uses, residential, mostly residential in nature. On the Decatur Avenue side, all of those properties are residential, mixture of duplexes and single families. The uniqueness of this property is that the zoning boundary actually runs right down the middle of this block. So the property, the portion of this lot, which is just one lot right now, Malone's Lot 39, is it? No, that's not right. Lot 109, I'm sorry. The Washington Avenue frontage of this lot is in the CBD zone, and the Decatur Avenue frontage of the lot is in the multifamily zone. So it creates a situation that we had to be kind of creative in the development to make certain that it works out for both of those two individual neighborhoods, because we're basically dealing with two neighborhoods in proposing two new buildings. So I'm going quickly to what I'll call Exhibit A2, which is an existing survey of the property. You can see 35-foot-wide lot from Washington to Decatur. The existing brick building has a number of what I would consider nonconformities, side yard setbacks of three feet and 3.8 feet, a front yard setback of zero, really pushed up on Washington Avenue, and then the back of the property not utilized. The proposal is to, and now I'm going to Exhibit A3. The proposal is to subdivide the property down the zoning boundary line, which is why if you look at the plan, you'll see a difference in the lot depth. We're not proposing to split the lot exactly in half, we're splitting it down the zone boundary, which is, from a planning perspective, is really the right thing to do. So we're proposing a lot, as Mr. Rubin's report mentions, on Washington Avenue that is 35 feet wide and 111 feet deep. We're proposing a lot on Decatur Avenue that is 35 feet wide and 100 feet deep. Both of the lots, based on the zoning requirements, both of the lots for the uses that are proposed on them, meet the area requirement, they meet the depth requirement, but they are both nonconforming with regard to lot width. The zoning would require 40 feet at this location, we are proposing 35 feet, and obviously it's a situation where properties on both sides are fully developed. The lot is what it is as far as width is concerned, but it does have the area, which is important because it shows you that you've got adequate lot to actually develop the property at that specific location. So the proposal, as far as construction is concerned, is to build a single-family home on the Decatur Avenue frontage and build a duplex structure on the Washington Avenue frontage. So essentially, what we're proposing is to take an existing three-unit property and reconfigure it into three units, add more beautiful units, build units that meet flood requirements and are more of a current-day standard as compared to the very outdated building that's there today. But in doing so, there are a couple of variances with each of the proposals, and I'll first go to Decatur, and then we'll jump over to Washington. The Decatur Avenue project, or side of the property, which, as I mentioned, is a single-family home, does require a lot width variance, 35 feet is proposed where 40 foot is required, and it does require a combined side yard setback variance. We're meeting the minimum setback on either side of five feet, but we are slightly short on the total combined setback.
Is that because the last 35 feet wide didn't matter what?
Correct. It's a classic situation of a hardship variance, and it's interesting and similar to what I discussed in the case earlier, but in this case, we have a 35-foot-wide lot, so he was able to achieve the minimum on both sides as opposed to on a 32-foot-wide lot where he was stuck and wasn't able to do so. So in this case, we're all respecting that minimum side yard on both sides of the building, which is important. And secondarily, I looked at the side yards of the other buildings to see what kind of distance we have, and at this location, which is where the single-family would be sitting, we have approximately 12-foot setbacks, so on one side, we're talking about 17 feet between buildings, on the other side, it's approximately five feet, so we're looking at 10 feet between buildings, slightly over 10 feet between buildings on the southerly side. So we do have adequate distance between the buildings. We are proposing a single-family home on this lot where, based on the lot area and the zoning, this lot by itself, forgetting about the subdivided portion on Washington Avenue, actually could support a duplex. So we're actually half the density that that lot could support. So again, in a balancing situation, the lot width deviation, the combined side yard setback deviation, we think this plan is a better plan than what potential development alternatives there are, and we think it fits in very well with the surrounding land uses. Jumping over to the Washington Avenue side, the proposal there is a duplex structure, two units, where essentially three units sit up on Washington Avenue at this point, and the variances are very similar in nature in that we are requesting a combined side yard setback variance where we are proposing slightly over five feet on each side, and so we are respecting the minimum, but the combined side yard is required to be 12.95, and we have slightly over 10.
What's there now on the setbacks with the existing triplex?
The existing triplex is three feet and 3.8 feet, so it is a dramatic improvement from what's there now. And also, the development on either side of that building is relatively new, the Maloney's building reconstruction, and then the home on the other, on the northerly side are both relatively newer construction, and the setbacks from those properties, the property to the north, the existing house, is seven feet.
Yeah, that's okay.
Added to our five is over 12 feet between buildings, and the former Maloney's site is where the driveway comes in. That building is actually setback about 31 feet from their property line, so our distance between buildings on that side is going to be about 36 feet.
The board grants variances, the setbacks from what's there now to what's proposed will increase significantly?
They will increase significantly, and they are also very compatible with the adjacent buildings. That's correct.
The adjacent building being at-grade residential on Washington Avenue as well?
Correct, correct.
This will be flood elevated on Washington Avenue, not at-grade?
That is correct. The one, well, there's two differences in the variances that are necessary for the Washington Avenue site as compared to Decatur. The Washington Avenue site is proposing a building coverage variance where 35.6% is permitted. We are proposing 47%, which on its face sounds like a lot, but when you look, the interesting part about that is, when you look at this project, if we were, and this goes to the use variance, which I have to discuss at the end, but if you were building a commercial building at this location, you actually are permitted to occupy 60% of the lot. This proposal is 47%. So if we had commercial on the ground floor and were permitted use, we could actually occupy up to 60%. We are at 47, bringing the building dramatically off the front yard setback from where it currently is, respecting those minimum side yards, meeting the requirements of the rear yard. I think all those play a factor in mitigating the coverage that is proposed with this application. And then the last, and obviously the kind of key variance that's requested here, is the use variance portion of the project, which is, the structure that is on Washington Avenue is, as you know, required to have commercial on the ground floor in order to permit the residential. We are proposing a ground floor to be garage space, and then the first, the second level above the ground would be the first unit, and then the level above that would be the second unit. This is a location that's somewhat unique as far as commercial. We're very familiar with applications where commercial on the ground floor has been very much protected. We've been denied on a number of applications where applicants have come forward to ask for residential on the ground floor, where the board thought it was not appropriate. for residential on the ground floor where the board thought it was not appropriate.
But in a sense, if we're not taking an existing commercial use, putting it to residential? If taking a residential use at-grade, making it to residential use above the ground flood?
That's correct. You have a piece of property here that has been residential as a triplex on Washington Avenue for many, many years. So, this property is well-suited for residential because that's how it has existed for a great number of years.
And the homes next to it, all free on the then or after sign, are all residential at-grade?
That's correct.
Because it's the residential up off the ground, but it won't change the character?
That's correct. Secondarily, you have an existing lot that's thirty-five foot wide. Commercial on the ground floor on a thirty-five-foot wide lot is, many people would argue, is very difficult to be viable. The ADA access, parking issues, all the things associated with commercial land uses would be very, very difficult on a thirty-five-foot wide lot and this, in our opinion, really is more conforming with the character of this neighborhood than a commercial application would be on the ground floor.
John, what about the feasibility of commercial up off the ground based on the weather conditions? How would that fit in with the first floor condition?
First floor commercial would be difficult here because of the flood requirements. Yeah, absolutely. So, quickly to go to the purposes of zoning that are advanced with a use variance like this. We believe we're creating a more desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. We're providing a streetscape appeal by moving the building back. Mr. Weiss has designed a beautiful building. There's nice covered porches. We're providing off-street parking where none currently exists off of Washington Avenue. This building, it will be secure from flood. We're taking a building away that is non-compliant with regard to flood. I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing that at this point, but it's the truth. And this is a location, this use is particularly well-suited for what we propose, I'm sorry, this site is particularly well-suited for the use that's proposed because it's a use that's been here for many years. All the neighbors are accustomed to it. Instituting a commercial use at this location, in my opinion, would actually potentially be more of a detriment to those surrounding residential uses than keeping it residential as it has been. And I think most importantly, this applicant has chosen not to take this property to its maximum density potential. Typically, as you know, we're here, we're asking for the maximum density that your ordinance would permit from development scheme. With the subdivision, this project would permit a duplex on each of these two lots. So, we are, we have three units now. We would be a conforming condition at four units, but we're proposing a different type of project, which is still only three units. So, this project is essentially a reconfiguration of better units that are more in conformity than today's construction.
Would it be fair to say that based on the negative criteria, if the board were to see fit to create the variance for the use?
Yes, for all the reasons I've already stated, yes. That's all I have.
We know it's late.
Unfortunately, there's a lot to this one.
Peter, want to just walk us through the design briefly and then we can...
Any questions from the board? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Please be sworn in.
I didn't actually say, but yeah, I did hear that's what we're requiring and I don't have all the tests.
There's a comment Mr. Rubin's reported with regard to the height of the buildings. We act frankly, neither Peter nor I recognize the fact that not only does the zoning change, the height zone also changes. So, Peter had originally designed both buildings at thirty feet and Roger pointed out that the Washington Avenue building is only permitted twenty-eight feet. So, as a condition of approval, Peter will be submitting revised plans to meet the twenty-eight foot height, would not ask for height variance. I believe that's what he wanted to hear.
You have to be sworn in if you want to say anything. Please use the microphone. Just point it towards you, it's directional.
I was just going to say that I understand what they're trying to do and it appears reasonable. About now? Better? Okay, sorry. All I would like to say is that this request, based on the short time I've read it, appears reasonable and well-founded. The only request I would ask the board is, should you approve it to have the height of the roof come down from thirty to twenty-eight at the highest point and the other roof that's twenty, I guess twenty-eight above sea level or whatever that is, to go down to twenty-six? So, it's, so they can keep their same twenty, whatever it is, a couple feet separation because there's the first twenty-five feet, and I'm talking about the one on Washington. That would, where's your plan?
Didn't they just say they're going to take the one on Washington down to twenty-eight?
Yes.
I was going to say, and that's all, that's all I was going to say.
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? Please come forward and be sworn in.
I had understood there was also supposed to be a pool on the property facing Decatur. I'm concerned about where the fire hydrant will move since that fire hydrant is right in front of that house and I know I've spoken with them about where it could possibly be moved, but I'm wondering where that would be. And I'm also concerned, and I know they brought this up, and I just want to confirm that about the parking on Washington because they're supposed to be parking for six cars there and I want to ensure that it will not hit the sidewalk so that everybody can walk without being blocked by cars.
John?
Yeah. The second said it's not going to block the sidewalk, say, or five ways.
Correct. I didn't want it to obstruct the sidewalk.
Okay. Your first question was about your pool. There is a pool proposed, you're correct. And the pool does conform to our requirements. Your second question was with regard to the fire hydrant, which is on Washington Avenue.
Correct.
The proposal is to move it to this off the property, this off the property line so that it's not blocking where it's likely.
You know that hydrant?
Yeah. Your driveway. Yeah, we're going to, we'll keep it slightly from our sides so it's not going to block your, we can't block anybody's driveway. So, it'll be between the two driveways and then your...
Sidewalk. Six cars blocking the sidewalk?
I just want to make sure that, I want to know what's going to be on the other side that faces the north side.
This, there's...
It's the sign?
Right. That's one of the grasses. It's, it's...
There may ultimately be a fence there when the duplex is completed, but there's between the two properties.
And then as far as the wall, being able to pass by, this will be a regular residential driveway. So, as you're walking by here, this will still feel like an open sidewalk. The first space that is in front of the building has a full depth from the property, from the back of the sidewalk to the face of the house to park without blocking the sidewalk and the other two spaces are underneath the building. So, as far as your sidewalk is concerned, if you want to see, you won't feel like that. Well, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else here from the public that would like to speak? Please come forward and be sworn in.
I just want to say that I think the plans as proposed are great. I think it's a good addition. Thirty-five foot width is, it's typical there anyway. There's been so many other lots of the same issue, so there's just no difference. I think it's going to be beautiful. So, I have no objection at all. I understand the parking is going to be good. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public portions. Any further discussion from the board? Any questions? Stan, would you phrase the motion?
The applications for minor subdivision approval with certain variance relief, first being a D variance. The duplex side on Washington Avenue is in the CBD zone, which requires retail use on the first floor. The applicant's proposing no retail use and is proposing residential duplex. There's also, sorry, there's also C variances for, on the Decatur side, a lot width, I'm sorry, for lot width for both lots, I'm sorry, if thirty-five feet is proposed, required is forty feet. That's an existing non-conforming lot. Both of them are existing non-conforming. Also, combined setbacks, the requirement's twelve point nine five feet. I think from what I saw, it's ten feet. Is that what it is they're proposing?
Ten point one three, yes.
Ten point one? Ten point one feet, which requires a variance for combined setbacks. The building coverage, forty-seven percent, is proposed. The required is thirty-five point six percent. And any conditions, Mr. Rubin?
Revised plans, lowering the duplex a height to twenty-eight feet, eliminating the small rear non-conformity on the duplex of eight point four inches, satisfying all city engineer requirements.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Hear a motion? Please. Second?
I'll second it. Glenn Waslewski?
Well, generally, I'm opposed to any loss of commercial property. We don't have that much. But the fact that a good number of the properties on both sides of Washington Avenue are now of residential use and the fact that we're going to get rid of eyesore of that existing building, I tend to vote yes.
Mike Old Richmond?
I'm going to vote yes. I think that the new property is a substantial improvement to what's there now and I'm going to vote yes.
I agree with Glenn Waslewski about the commercial on Washington Avenue. They've gone by the wayside. It's going to be a big improvement over this property you have here that's there now. I approve the project.
The property owner is right there, he's going to be upset that everybody's saying it's a big improvement.
It's going to be a big improvement.
Thank you. Here he is.
Dave Carter?
I agree. I agree and I think it's an improvement for Washington Avenue.
I don't favor the application and agree with the comments stated by Glenn.
Remy Goldstein?
I vote to approve for all the reasons stated on the record.
Patterson?
I also have a big concern with losing commercial space, but the fact that it hasn't been commercial space for fifty years mitigates that concern. I approve the application.
Remy? Remy, you second that motion?
I second it.
Call of favor, I, all opposed, none.
I'll talk to you. I never brought it up. I'm sure we'll be in touch. Barnhart, he said, "I'm going to go quickly." I didn't realize he was going to go that quickly. He was like the speed talker.
He doesn't leave anything out when he goes.
Right. Well, he knew that, he's like, they've been here for two nights straight and he wanted everybody to get outside.
We had eleven cases. Retired as it is.
Yeah. Thanks.
But you proposed November thirtieth close before the...
Well, Roberto, I mean, right now, we'll get the resolution next month. We'll publish it the next day. I would say he's going to close quickly. There's nothing to do now.
So, is it around November thirtieth or soon?
Let me find out for sure. Okay. Don't worry. He must have retired.
Yeah, man.
Two nights in a row? All right. So, why don't we do this? I'll get the process started. Let me email Chris and Alex tomorrow telling them, let's figure out a schedule. That'll get everybody working on the same, and then you and I talk and then it'll go back to Alex. I'll send one master email.
There you go.
All right, good.
All right, man. Congratulations.
I need you fine, man.